Felicia Orth, I'm a hearing officer appointed by the Cabinet Secretary of the Environment Department to conduct a hearing in this matter, on the matter of BL Santa Fe renewal and modification of a discharge permit. This is DP 75, doctored by the hearing clerk as GWQB 24-69. As a permit, the hearing is governed by the procedural regulations at 20.1.4 of the New Mexico Administrative Code. These are the departments permitting procedures across a variety of programs. And the governing Environmental Protection Regulations are 20.6.2. These are the rules relating to the protection of ground and surface water. We have already had some discussion about applicable regulations, and we'll pick that up again this morning. But let me just offer a general description of the way we'll proceed. There are four parties in the matter. The Groundwater Bureau, the Permittee, Bishop's Lodge, the Protect Tassuki Organization, and Mr. Maxwell from HOPS. Mr. Maxwell has already indicated this morning that he will not be able to join us today or possibly this week. And Pam and Luis will let me know if he is able to join us. The procedural rules call for the applicant to put on its presentation first. And of course, they have the burden of proof. And we'll hear from the Bureau. All testimony is taken under oath and subject to cross-examination. I was asked for some indication of a time to accept public comment. Happy to invite that every day that we are in hearing at 1:00 p.m. If someone needs special arrangements, please speak with Pam Jones or Luis Lopez here behind me, and we will get you taken care of. We sometimes invite public comment at 5:00. Didn't want to do that this week because the security staff has been firm with us about needing to vacate the roundhouse shortly after 5:00. So I don't want to mislead people that we're going to be able to be in this room much longer than 5:00 p.m. All of the documents relevant to this case can be found on the department's doctored matters webpage. We'll proceed through the evidence. We'll wrap up the record. David, our court reporter, will provide us with a transcript. The parties will have an opportunity to submit post-hearing closing arguments, proposed findings and conclusions. I then write a report with a recommendation. It goes to the Cabinet Secretary, and he issues a final order. All of that plays out over the next couple of months. And we'll talk about the exact timeline for the post-hearing process when we get to the end of the evidence hearing. So I ordinarily take a 15-minute break every 90 minutes, maybe 100 minutes, just to make sure we all have comfortable breaks. We will take a lunch hour from 12:00 to 1:00 so that we can come back for the 1 o'clock public comment. And as I said, we are going to have to wrap up around 5:00 p.m. each day. Let's see. We do have, as you know, it's a hybrid hearing, so we have folks on the platform. If you're on the platform and need to reach out to Pam or Luis, please use the chat function to do that. I think next I'll take appearances. Ms. Mulcahy? All right. And that reminds me that we need to get you a microphone or you need to come to a microphone. Yes, if you can pull that. The folks on the platform can't hear what you're saying unless you're speaking into a microphone.
Okay. Can they hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Chris Mulcahy. I'm here with my colleague Sarah Clergey. We are from the firm Holland &amp; Hart. And with me this morning as well, I have the owners of Bishop's Lodge, representatives from Juniper. I have Mr. Chris Kaplan and Mr. Greg Hans.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Weatherly?
Morning, Madam Hearing Officer. Crystal Weatherly here, Assistant General Counsel for the New Mexico Environment Department. And with me today, I have Jason Herman, Avery Young, and Deborah Carpenter from the NMED Groundwater Quality Bureau.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nasco? Yes?
Good morning, hearing officer. Tom Nasco of Pinkwood Shaver on behalf of Protect Tassuki Inc. With me this morning are numerous members of Protect Tassuki.
Thank you very much. All right. And as we go along, we can figure out the best place for the witnesses. We can certainly make use of this very ample dais. I don't take up that much room. We can put some witnesses here or here. And perhaps when the lawyers are cross-examining one another's witnesses, you could come up to the dais as well. We just need to make sure people are comfortably have a microphone to speak into. So we do have, let's see, I found Frank A., Bishop's Lodge's motions in limine. I saw a response from Mr. Maxwell. And just now I saw a response from Protect Tassuki. I also saw a notice of correction of typographical errors or other errors that way. Is there anything else we would want to talk about before we turn to the witnesses? Anyone? No?
No. And we can either address the motion in limine now, Madam Hearing Officer, or before Protect Tassuki presents its case, if it's going to present a case, whichever is your preference.
All right. Does anyone else have a preference?
Madam Hearing Officer, we could address the issue briefly now. It shouldn't take long.
All right. We can do that. So what I don't have, I have this motion. I have Mr. Nasco's response, Mr. Maxwell's response. Ms. Weatherly, would you have anything to add?
The department does not oppose the motion in limine.
Okay. Ms. Mulcahy, would you like to provide anything by way of reply?
Yes. I'm happy to start now, if that's okay with you, Madam Hearing Officer.
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. So we filed this motion in limine on two narrow topics. The first of which is discussion about which set of regulations govern this proceeding. All of that was determined on pre-hearing motions. That was the purpose of those motions specifically. The liquid waste disposal regulations at 20.7.3 are no more relevant to this proceeding than any other statute or regulations. They're no more relevant than perhaps the Federal Clean Water Act here. That was already decided on the pre-hearing motions. This hearing has been noticed for a hearing on the draft permit. All of the extraneous pre-hearing stuff was already determined. So we would request that that information be excluded here today. Any discussions about whether the liquid waste regulations provide X or Y, we'd also request that cross-examination exclude that information. It was already determined here. The second request that we have is to exclude testimony that we have a reasonable belief that will occur from Protect Tassuki, which is non-expert testimony from a, excuse me, expert testimony from a lay witness. We have reason to believe that a gentleman named Lloyd Rusty Day is going to attempt to testify about quote-unquote downstream effects, quote-unquote impacted wells, the geology of the basin. He is not an expert witness. From everything that we understand, he's a former intellectual property attorney. He's not a geologist, a hydrologist, a geo-hydrologist. He has no training or expertise in those. And so we would request that that type of testimony be excluded.
Thank you, Ms. Mulcahy. Mr. Nasco, anything to add?
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer. There's no question that the ground and surface protection regulations are going to apply to this hearing. The hearing officer is so ruled, and we're going to respect that ruling, of course. And that's why we're here today. But having said that, the ground and surface water protection regulations by themselves do not specifically address many aspects of liquid waste disposal. Very generic. But the policy of those regulations is to protect all groundwater, all groundwater from degradation and make sure it's complying with the 3103 standards in situ. And in implementing that policy, the Environment Department has broad authority. Regulations themselves do not identify particular aspects of controls for liquid waste regulation, but it's certainly within the authority of the Environment Department, as a hearing officer, Madam Hearing Officer, for you to determine under the ground and surface water protection regulations that it's appropriate to import some of the protections or to consider some of the protections set forth in the liquid waste regulations. Doesn't mean you're going to apply them. We're in full agreement with a resort. This hearing is about the ground and surface water protection regulations, but it does not mean that certain aspects such as sizing distances from watercourses, discharge rates, and other matters that are of public importance to protect the environment shouldn't be considered. Those may be found in the liquid waste regulations. They may be found anywhere else. But there's a broad charge under the ground and surface water protection regulations for the Environment Department to do what is necessary to impose such requirements as are necessary to protect the degradation of groundwater. That's all. Just want to make sure that we're in agreement primarily with the motion, but it's a little bit expansive. I just want to make that point, especially for cross-examination. Which segues into the next point. I don't know where they got the idea that Mr. Day is going to testify. We've never even intimated such a thing, and he's not. So that issue's off the table. We do not have an expert case to put on. Our case, we've made through cross-examination and through our public comments from the citizens. And by the way, I'd like to remind everyone, they have to sign the sheet, I believe, to make public comments. So make sure you do that. But in that respect, the motion in limine, it's just a little broad. But we are going to respect the fact that this proceeding is definitely occurring only under the ground and surface water protection regulations. That's law of the case. Now, we're going to challenge that, but we're not going to challenge it here. That's inappropriate, and we know that. But I want the hearing officer to be aware that there are certain protections that we believe ground and surface water protection regulations allow you to import, but they haven't been considered in this case. We'd like the leeway to talk about those.
All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Nasco, Ms. Mulcahy.
Sure. So two things. The, for example, Mr. Nasco discussed sizing and setbacks and distances from watercourses. Those are exclusively in the liquid waste regulations. They don't appear anywhere in the groundwater protection regulations. And so the fact that there's some other set of regulations that the NMED may also enforce under different circumstances when those regulations apply, it's the same situation that I've just asked for exclusion of that evidence. I mean, the fact that the NMED also has jurisdiction over hazardous waste, those regulations don't apply here and shouldn't be discussed. Again, these matters have already been determined on a pre-hearing motion, and we would request that you, Madam Hearing Officer, exclude evidence going to information in the liquid waste regulations, whether it's sizing, setbacks, anything that's not part of the groundwater protection regulations, which are the governing regulations. That's more than respectable and what's required here. Thank you, Madam.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mulcahy. I guess two things to you. One, I think it's hard to, for me, to just say, well, we're not going to allow things like, you know, sizing our distance to watercourse not to be uttered, right, in this hearing? And in my mind, the reason is that the rules contemplate, 20.1.4 contemplates that interveners, neighbors, what have you, can offer additional permit conditions. And in fact, that's often where the most interesting discussions are had in a challenge to a permit when folks seek special conditions. Now, I think Mr. Nasco's primary challenge is that those suggesting special conditions have the burden to provide support in the evidentiary record for those conditions. In my mind, it would have to be something more than legal argument. It would actually have to be evidentiary support. Mr. Nasco has acknowledged they don't have technical evidence to offer this week. So the only other thing I would say is that the nature of administrative hearings is such that a lot of evidence comes in that ultimately is parsed and weighed. And after receipt of the transcript while I'm writing up my report, and I am able to weigh different types of evidence and public comment, give it away that it's due. And in that respect, I have to ask you to trust me to weigh those things properly when we have the transcript in hand and the final arguments and the whole picture of what this case is about is laid out. So is there anything else? Just, I think, some misapprehension, to your point. I think there've been some misapprehensions, maybe even some misinformation floating around in this case. And I want to do my best to prevent that from being amplified in this room. Having said that, I don't think it's good to react in real time to everything someone might say that perhaps doesn't respect all of the boundaries we might want to set. Anything further on that point? So I think I heard from Mr. Nasco what I needed to hear, which is that he understands the requirements in the rule to offer technical witnesses if he wanted to present technical evidence, and that he understands that the applicable regulations here are in 20.6.2, not 20.7.3. And otherwise, I would let him conduct the cross-examination he wants to he wants to conduct within all the rest of the boundaries. So, all right. Anything more on the motions in limine? I'm going to keep listening, and we might have to revisit it if our understandings fall apart. Anything further from anyone?
No, ma'am. Thank you. And I think that's right. If and when it's appropriate, we'll just renew the motion if it becomes appropriate.
Yeah. I want to give everyone a chance to preserve whatever objections they have because I think we all understand that from what I'm doing, it goes to the Cabinet Secretary. From the Cabinet Secretary, it goes to the Water Quality Control Commission, the Water Quality Control Commission, to the Court of Appeals, have lots of opportunities to press your arguments. All right. Anything else? All right. Shall we start with opening statements then? Ms. Mulcahy?
Please. May I have the ability to share my screen?
Okay. Thank you. Any party may ask that, and it takes a few heartbeats, but Pam and Luis will take care of it.
Thank you. And that can be seen on your side, Madam Hearing Officer.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I already said, but good morning, Madam Hearing Officer, and good morning to members of the public. I am here with my colleague Sarah Clergey, and we are from the law firm Holland &amp; Hart. We represent Bishop's Lodge. With us today, we also have Mr. Kaplan and Mr. Hans. BL Santa Fe is the applicant for the draft permit renewal and modification. Protect Tassuki and its members requested this hearing on the draft permit. We are grateful for the opportunity to be heard on the permit and appreciate your time. In September 2024, the NMED Groundwater Quality Bureau issued a public notice for the proposed approval of the draft permit, both before and after September 2024. Protect Tassuki has said a lot about this draft permit. But here we are today, along with four technical experts, to share the facts and the science of this permit. The Lodge has said it before, and we will say it again here today. The law and the science must govern this permit hearing. Scare tactics and conjecture have no place here. Protect Tassuki would prefer that this hearing rest on these scare tactics and this conjecture because their entire case rests on keeping members of the public fearful and misinformed. More on those tactics in a moment. Here are the facts. In 1979, Bishop's Lodge obtained its initial groundwater discharge permit under the ground and surface water protection regulations at 20.6.2. For almost 50 years, Bishop's Lodge has operated and maintained its wastewater treatment facilities under a groundwater discharge permit. Since 1979, Bishop's Lodge has obtained seven renewals and modifications of its discharge permit. The current draft permit will be the eighth renewal and modification. Eighth. The Lodge's discharge permit expired in 2019 by operation of law, but has been administratively continued since then. The draft permit regulates three things. First, the Lodge's receipt and treatment of domestic wastewater. Second, the Lodge's wastewater treatment facility. And third, the Lodge's disposal of fully treated effluent, fully treated to the low-dose disposal area. Let's talk first about the wastewater. The Lodge receives and treats only domestic wastewater. Domestic wastewater is wastewater from toilets, sinks, baths, washing machines, and dishwashers. The Lodge does not receive or treat any other kind of wastewater. The Lodge's wastewater comes from two sources. One, the Lodge, and two, the Hills and Villas subdivision. The Hills and Villas are 67 single-family homes and condos just adjacent to the Lodge. Second, let's talk about that treatment facility. For the past few years, Bishop's Lodge has worked with wastewater treatment experts, EPA, and then the NMED.
Madam Hearing Officer, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm going to have to object. This is not a closing argument. It's supposed to be an opening statement telling you what the evidence is going to show. And Ms. Mulcahy is making it into a closing argument. We haven't heard any evidence.
All right. Ms. Mulcahy?
It's, first of all, it's an opening statement. I'm not making any arguments. Arguments of counsel are not evidence. So it's plain that I'm just making an opening statement, laying out the case, which I'm more than allowed to do under the rules, and I will continue to do so.
And is the statement that this is the evidence you intend to present implied here?
Yes. This is the evidence that we intend to present. It will not come in through me. It will come in through the correct experts.
Thank you. Go ahead.
For the past few years, Bishop's Lodge has worked with wastewater treatment experts, the EPA, and then the NMED to replace its antiquated wastewater facilities. Parts of the old facility of Bishop's Lodge dated to the 1970s. In the summer of 2024, the Lodge replaced these antiquated facilities. And in their place, the Lodge installed a state-of-the-art wastewater treatment plant, the membrane bioreactor wastewater treatment plant. The MBR plant utilizes a treatment train to fully treat the wastewater before discharge to the low-dose disposal area. A treatment train means a multi-step treatment process. The Lodge's treatment train is considered tertiary treatment. I have up here on the screen a graphic that will be discussed by our experts. I'm not offering this as evidence of the treatment train. This is a simplified schematic of the treatment train. But if you look here in the yellow boxes, starting here where it says core screen, this is the effluent, so the wastewater that comes into the treatment plant. The boxes that you see in yellow, these are your pre-treatment steps. So in normal nomenclature, all that means is it's the treatment before the treatment actually begins. In these three steps, the Lodge's treatment plant does three things. First, in the core screen, it filters out large solids. Large solids include plastics and other particles larger in size than 6 millimeters. Second, the wastewater flows to the equalization tank. In the equalization tank, the inflow of the effluent is equalized. This ensures more thorough treatment. And finally, in the third pre-treatment step, the fine screen filters down to anything smaller than 2 millimeters. As you move along this diagram here, you go to the next treatment step. The processes in green, those are considered primary treatment. And in the primary treatment steps, you have biological processes that conduct denitrification, nitrification, and then denitrification again. In these three boxes, the Lodge treats out organic contaminants. And when I say treat out, I mean removes. If you then move down to the purple box, this is considered secondary treatment. This is the membrane bioreactor where ultrafiltration membranes filter out anything that is larger than 0.04 microns. It filters 99.99% of viruses. It filters 99.9999% of bacteria. For context, a single human hair is between 50 and 100 microns. For context, a single pathogenic E. coli is 0.5 microns, so substantially larger than what we filter out in our membrane. Finally, if you move down here to this golden box that says ultraviolet disinfection, this is tertiary treatment. In this step, ultraviolet light kills by disinfection anything that remains in the wastewater that is smaller than 0.04 microns. Anything that got through that very tiny ultrafiltration membrane is killed in this final step. Anything that got through that very tiny ultrafiltration membrane is killed in this final step. Only after all of these treatment steps is the Lodge's effluent discharged. What is the result of this treatment training? The result is an effluent so clean, it can be reused in the irrigation of food crops. Think about that for a moment, the irrigation of food crops. But don't take my word for it. Let me show you how clean this effluent is. What I have here is a jar of the effluent from the Bishop's Lodge MBR Treatment Plant. I took this yesterday. Right here, that's me. That's what's going into the low-dose disposal area. This effluent right here.
Excuse me just a moment. Please don't speak up from the audience.
This is the effluent. I encourage members of the public to come at that break and look at this. Don't take my word for it. See it for yourself. See it for yourself.
Yes, Mr. Nesko.
I think we're getting way beyond stuff of any opening statement. It's not what we're here for. It's such a closing argument.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nesko. Ms. Monk, eh? Generally, opening statements are about 20 minutes long. You've gone about 10 minutes. Are you wrapping up soon?
Madam Hearing Officer, I have about 15 minutes more.
All right, go ahead.
The effluent in that jar meets or exceeds the water quality standards at 3103. Illogically, Protect Tsukki has clamored for the Lodge to go to a septic tank and leach field system rather than the system that treats wastewater to that quality. For purposes of comparison, the septic tank that Protect Tsukki wants has only this treatment stuff right here. That's it. After that first step, a septic tank discharges to the ground. Let's talk briefly about the science and the water quality and what you'll hear from our experts. The Lodge has one monitoring well, upgradient of the treatment plant. It also has two monitoring wells, downgradient of the disposal area. The upgradient monitoring wells monitor background quality. The two ground point, downgradient monitoring wells monitor groundwater quality specifically for impacts from the disposal area, the area where Bishop's Lodge disposes of its treated effluent. Since September 2024, when the plant went operational, Bishop's Lodge has submitted two quarters of monitoring reports to NMED, the fourth quarter 2024 monitoring report and the first quarter 2025 monitoring report. You'll hear from our two experts, Mr. Pierce and Mr. Leader, about the qualities in these reports. You'll see on the left-hand column here, the four constituents that are regulated under the existing draft, excuse me, the existing discharge permit, and what will be regulated under the permit. The second thing you see here are the concentration limits in the 3103 applicable regulations. Then you see the quality of our effluent. Then you see the quality from the sampling results from monitoring well one, monitoring well two, and monitoring well three. The Lodge's effluent, as well as the samples from the monitoring wells, demonstrate that Bishop's Lodge more than meets the water quality standards. In fact, in certain instances, as you will hear from Mr. Leader and Mr. Pierce, the treatment is so good that some of these constituents could not even be detected by standard analyzed analytical laboratory tests. We have said it before, and we will say it again. Science and the law must guide this hearing. In support of its position, Bishop's Lodge will present four witnesses. Barry Lee, Larry Booth Pierce, Steve Fusion, and Charlie Leader. Mr. Lee is a New Mexico professional engineer and board-certified environmental engineer. He has 50 years of experience planning, designing, and constructing wastewater treatment plants and related infrastructure, such as the low-dose disposal area. He planned, designed, and oversaw the construction of the Bishop's Lodge MBR Treatment Plant and low-dose disposal area. Mr. Lee supports making this permit final. Second, you will hear from Mr. Pierce. Mr. Pierce is a geohydrologist with 30 years of experience in geology, hydrology, groundwater monitoring, and groundwater contamination. He is the geohydrologist that oversees the Lodge's compliance with its existing permit. He testified that the draft permit will require the Lodge to sample, monitor, and report on the regulated constituents. He concluded that the draft discharge permit should be approved and made final. Third, we will have Mr. Fusion. Mr. Fusion is a New Mexico Certified Water Operator Level 3 and New Mexico Certified Wastewater Operator Level 3 and an instructor for wastewater certification courses in the state of New Mexico. He has 20 years of experience in the environmental and wastewater fields. He operates the MBR Treatment Plant day-to-day. He supports making the draft permit final and that Bishop's Lodge should be approved to continue to responsibly operate the plant. Fourth, and finally, we will have Mr. Leader. He is a New Mexico professional engineer and has 50 years of experience in water and wastewater treatment, operations, maintenance, design, and ground and surface water discharge permitting. Mr. Leader is also a New Mexico Certified Water Operator Level 4 and New Mexico Certified Wastewater Operator Level 4, the highest possible certification in the state of New Mexico. Mr. Leader also supports making the draft discharge permit final. Madam Hearing Officer, the facts and the science clearly demonstrate that the Lodge will meet the numeric limits in the draft permit, and our evidence will show as much. The facts and the science also demonstrate the Lodge's discharge will not result in concentrations in excess of the water quality standards in 20.6.2. The law therefore dictates that the Lodge's draft discharge permit be made final and issued. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monk. That was 20 minutes, actually. Ms. Weatherly, do you have an opening statement?
Madam Hearing Officer, counsel and members of the public. My name again is Crystal Weatherly. I am Assistant General Counsel of the New Mexico Environment Department. And I'm here today to represent the Groundwater Quality Bureau of the Water Protection Division of the New Mexico Environment Department. We are here today in support of the approval of the revised draft discharge permit associated with the application for the renewal and modification of discharge permit number 75, or DP 75, for Bishop's Lodge Santa Fe. With me today is Jason Herman, Section Manager of the Pollution Prevention Section of the Groundwater Quality Bureau. Mr. Herman's testimony will address the applicable law and regulations for DP 75, why the facility is required to obtain a groundwater discharge permit, how the department issues groundwater discharge permits generally, and how the general terms and conditions of discharge permits, no, excuse me, and the general terms and conditions of discharge permits issued by the department. Also with me today is Avery Young, Large Systems Domestic Waste Team Lead of the Pollution Prevention Section of the Groundwater Quality Bureau. Ms. Young's testimony will address the facility and the site, the draft permit and its history and development, the regulatory basis for the draft permit, the protective nature of the draft permit, the Bureau's fulfillment of all regulatory requirements associated with this permitting action and hearing, and the public comments received by the department on the draft permit. And last, but certainly not least, Ms. Deborah Carpenter, Water Resource Professional 3 of the Pollution Prevention Section of the Groundwater Quality Bureau. Ms. Carpenter's testimony will address the disposal field design principles and how they were applied, how they were applied to the facility. Through its testimonies, the department will show that the draft discharge permit for Bishop's Lodge was properly issued pursuant to the Water Quality Act and the Ground and Surface Water Protection Regulations, that all regulatory requirements were met in the Bureau's evaluation and processing of the permit renewal and modification application, as well as regulatory requirements involving public notice and participation. And with that, the department requests that, following their testimony, that the Bureau's witnesses be allowed to answer any cross-examination questions as a panel. And the grounds for this motion include an interest in clarity and efficiency as the Bureau's evaluations and analysis are often a collaborative process.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. I can address that right now. A lot of our environmental hearings include cross-examination of witnesses as a panel. It's meant to make it easier to pose questions rather than harder because often the scope of each witness's testimony is adjacent to another witness's testimony. I know sometimes lawyers who haven't seen it before, particularly the business litigators, are suspicious of it, but then they see it in action and they tend to embrace it after that. So if, in fact, you wanted to pose a question to a particular witness, you could say, "This question is for this witness." Unless you say that, though, anyone can offer an answer, and maybe more than one of them will offer an answer. So, all right. And anyone else? Well, Ms. Monk, eh? I don't know if you were planning to offer as a panel or not.
I'm not. We will do our witnesses individually, and I request that ours be done individually, but I have no objection to the department doing it. In fact, I think I've only ever seen the department do it as a panel, so it's no problem.
All right. Any objection, Mr. Nesko?
No objection, Madam Hearing Officer. That seems efficient.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Ms. Weatherly.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Nesko.
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer, counsel, and members of the public. I want to make clear what we're here for first, and then I want to explain what the evidence is not going to show. What we're here for here is not, is to request denial of this permit. We're not here for the sake of imposing conditions because we believe that the resort has not met its burden of proof, and the Environment Department has not discharged its obligation to ensure that this application for this discharge permit is protective of groundwater. In fact, the opposite is true because there's so much we don't know about this. Here's what the evidence is going to show. And by the way, we don't need an expert to tell you that the only thing they're testing for is kaledal nitrates and chlorides. There are 46 3103 contaminant standards. They're not testing for any of those. And that would be one thing, but here's where, here's where it files on and makes it more egregious. They're aggregating wastes. I think Ms. McCully said 67 homes and villas. I thought it was 83 in total. Whatever the number, it's a large number. They're aggregating these wastes, and they have no idea what these people are putting down their drains. The evidence is going to show that they have no clue, the Environment Department is not, and there is no way for the Lodge to ever know what's coming into their system. And that's the problem. There's so much missing from this application that is woefully inadequate and should not be improved. So the evidence is going to show, number one, when Ms. Monk says all the 3103 standards are complied with, well, that's not true. I don't know if it's false either. We just don't know. And there is no witness who's going to stand up there and testify that they know whether someone's putting medical waste down the drain, turpentine down the drain, PFAS, things that the system cannot clear up. We don't know. There's never been any, and this is evidence going to show this too. We don't need an expert for this too because we can ask them. We know that the resort had failures of leach fields in the past, and we assume it's from saturation. But we don't know the condition of groundwater now underneath those failed leach fields. Have no idea what 3103 contaminants is in their groundwater because the Environment Department never made it a condition of this application, of this permit. So we don't know what's there currently for a baseline. We don't know what the effluent is coming, we have no idea what the effluent is coming into the system. And we only know on the effluent through very infrequent testing for nitrates, chlorides, and TDS. That's it. We have no idea for toxic wastes under 3103. We have no idea for the 46 listed contaminants. We don't deal with lead, metals, medical waste, anything else is entering the system. So our case is based wholly on the notion that the Environment Department has failed in its duty to ensure that this application under the Ground and Surface Water Protection Regulations is protective of groundwater. And we know that there's a technical advisory committee for the Environment Department. We're going to talk about this during Cross. And they, they limit the size of leach fields for a particular reason. The evidence is going to show that this leach field is 10 times the size of that which would be permitted by the technical advisory committee. Times the size. So we don't know these things. And yet, we're going forward. We have all this nice bill. Look at, this is exactly what we're we're doing to this treatment facility. Everyone's going to test how great it is, and we comply with all 3103 standards. Well, if that were true, you wouldn't even need a permit. You'd file a notice of intent, and the Environment Department would say, "Yeah, you're right. You comply with all of these 46 constituent concentration limits." They didn't say that. The resort has no idea. I don't have any idea. And when this hearing is over, Madam Hearing Officer, respectfully, you're not going to have any idea. No one's going to know because all we're concerned with is nitrates, chlorides, and TDS. And we have no way of knowing what's going down the drain in the villas or all of these. And this, incidentally, to pivot over to the regulations no one wants to talk about, which we're not here to adjudicate today, that's why you can't aggregate wastes. There's no individuated responsibility. And the resort, they could have the greatest intentions in the world, but they have to admit that they don't know what's coming into their system, and no one does. So, Madam Hearing Officer, we're going to argue in our closing that, that, that... So Madam Hearing Officer, we're going to argue in our closing that, that, that you probably have written closings, but the burden of proof simply has not been met. They need to go back and meet it. And the hearing, uh, the permit should be denied for that reason. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nasco. Let's, um, Ms. Mulcahy. Thank you. Please hold applause. Uh, Ms. Mulcahy, would you like to call your first witness?
Yes, please. Um, and my first witness, Madam Hearing Officer, is remote. It's Gary Lee. He's up there on the screen. Could we give him control?
He should be good, counselor.
Okay, Mr. Lee, um, if you can hear me, could you please turn on your camera and your mic? Good morning, Mr. Lee.
Morning.
Um, Mr. Lee, this is the hearing officer. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Ms. Mulcahy.
Sure. Um, if I'm, should I have this mic or the mic on my computer on?
The mic you're holding is good.
Okay, no problem. Um, good morning, Mr. Lee. Could you please state your name for the record?
Gary Michael Lee.
Could you please state your title for the record?
I am managing member of Lee Consulting Engineers.
Okay, and, um, did you provide prefiled written testimony in this matter?
Yes.
Okay, and let me just make sure. Um, you, I believe, were Exhibit B. Mister, um, Lee, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Do you have any changes or addition to your prefiled written testimony that's been marked as Exhibit B?
No, I do not.
If you were to give this testimony today, would it be the same?
Yes.
Do you adopt the testimony in Exhibit B here today?
I do.
Could you please provide for Madam Hearing Officer, the parties and the public, a summary of your testimony?
Yes, uh, my testimony basically resides around the evaluation of the design, fabrication, and the installation of the membrane bioreactor plant that was, uh, constructed for Bishop's Lodge and the surrounding homeowners association. Uh, during the opening remarks, there was a somewhat of a summary of the, uh, process. I'm going to go in a little more detail and fill in a few blanks, uh, as to what this entire facility actually incorporates. As was stated in the opening remarks, raw wastewater is, is, uh, introduced to this facility in a influent wet well. The influent wet well serves as a influent pump station. And as it enters this wet well, it courses through a coarse screen which filters out or screens out any particles that are greater than a quarter inch in size. Once it goes through this coarse screen, the wastewater then is pumped to a, uh, equalization chamber via one of two pumps. One pump serves as a full-duty pump, the other as a standby pump. And they alternate in that respect, uh, as, uh, the system operates. Wastewater then is then pumped to the equalization basin. The purpose of the equalization basin is to provide a uniform, consistent flow and wastewater characteristics as much as possible to the downstream process units. Once it is, leaves the wastewater leaves the equalization basin, is then submitted to a fine screen. And as was mentioned earlier, this fine screen is composed of two-millimeter openings. The screenings from both the fine screen and the core screen are then aggregated, removed, and disposed in a landfill. Once the water, wastewater passes through the fine screen, then it enters what we refer to as a pre-anoxic basin. Anoxic basically means in this basin, we are operating under a low-oxygen aqueous environment. In this particular type of environment, we are promoting the growth of denitrifying bacteria. The purpose of these bacteria are basically to promote the conversion of nitrates to nitrogen gas for ambient removal and discharge. Leaving the pre-anoxic basin into an aeration basin or aerobic tank as was described earlier, we use two blowers, basically one full-duty, the other as standby. Again, alternating in that sequence as the plant operates. This provides oxygen to the aqueous environment within the aerobic chamber. Elevates the wastewater now to an oxygen level of two milligrams per liter to three milligrams per liter. In this particular basin, we are now promoting the growth of nitrifying bacteria. These nitrifying bacteria basically convert nitrates, or excuse me, converts ammonia to nitrites and ultimately to nitrates. In this chamber, we are reducing both and converting both ammonia levels and we are convert, converting and, uh, mitigating organic compounds generally measured in the form of bio- biochemical oxygen demand. Once the water leaves the aerobic chamber, it then goes into a post-anoxic chamber. Similar to the environment that was created in the pre-anoxic chamber, the purpose of this is for the denitrifiers to react with the nitrates that were formed in the previous chamber to convert those nitrates to nitrogen gas for ambient atmospheric removal. Once it lea, the wastewater leaves the post-anoxic chamber, as was stated earlier, it enters into two chambers that are, we refer to as re-aeration chambers. Again, bringing the oxygen level back up to around two milligrams per liter in the wastewater. Within these chambers, there exists a series of uni, of ultra-filter membranes that are submerged. And again, was stated earlier, these membranes have pore sizes of about point zero four microns. The purpose of these membranes are basically to filter out suspended solids, bacteria, cysts, and most viruses. I should stop here to point out that in all of these previous chambers, we are growing a population of bacteria. This bacteria will usually rise to somewhere around ten thousand to twelve thousand milligrams per liter in concentration. And because these bacterium are growing and reproducing, we are going to need to evacuate some of that bacterium periodically. This is usually evacuated in the form of what we refer to as waste-activated sludge. This waste-activated material, bacterium, is now going to be and is directed to the existing or old aeration tank which has now been repurposed as an aerobic digestion tank. Here, the solids are subjected to a long-term exposure to, to aerobic bacteria to further stabilize the solids before they are ultimately discharged into what we refer to as a constructed wetland or commonly referred to as a reed bed. Within this reed bed, there are certain phragmites, reeds that are particularly designed to help further stabilize the solids, de-water the solids. These are planted within a sand bed and as the water is, as the sludge is de-watered, water that is, uh, released from the sand bed is redirected to the headworks of the plant for further treatment. Now back to the effluent from the ultrafilters. The ultrafilters, uh, wastewater, treated wastewater is then subjected to two ultraviolet reactors, ultraviolet light reactors. The purpose of these reactors are basically to disinfect the wastewater prior to ultimate dis- discharge. The water leaving the ultraviolet, uh, reactors is then submitted to a three-thousand gallon, uh, wet well. This wet well allows for the purpose of being able to dispose of this wastewater in one of two manners. During this late spring, summer, and early fall portions of the year where irrigation is feasible and appropriate, because this is now classified or would be classified as a Class One effluent, it can be discharged to landscape irrigation with very little restrictions. The alternative, when irrigation is not feasible or not appropriate, particularly during the winter seasons, that wastewater is then introduced to a low-dosing lateral field. This lateral field accepts the wastewater as it is delivered through small diameter perforated pipes located within infiltrator chambers. This wastewater then is uniformly distributed throughout the lateral field into the chambers where it then percolates via gravity into the insitute soils and ultimately into the groundwater. This is the summary of, of how this treatment system operates. It was designed based on Discharge Permit Seventy-Five Draft under the guidance of the New Mexico Environmental Department and their regulations. It is my opinion that as the DP seventy-five is drafted, that this facility will meet or exceed the limits stipulated in that permit. That summarizes my testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Just a few follow-up questions here. In your testimony, you mentioned the low-dose lateral field. Is a low-dose lateral field a leach field?
Not in common parlance i- in our industry, a leach field is typically associated with the treatment and discharge of, uh, effluent from septic tanks which provide primary treatment at the most. Low-dosing field is intended here as a means of disposing of a highly-treated effluent water.
Does the low-dose disposal field act? Is it designed to be an area to treat wastewater here?
No, there's no further treatment expected or anticipated or designed around the low-dose disposal field.
Does Bishop's Lodge use any other leach field for its treatment plant?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Mr. Lee, um, would the MBR treatment plant treat for total Kidal nitrogen or TKN?
Yes, uh, the anticipation of this treatment plant is that it will operate consistently under eight milligrams per liter of total nitrogen, which is, total nitrogen is a measure of the TKN, which is a measure of organic nitrogen plus nitrates and nitrites.
And Mr. Lee, um, would this treatment plant treat chlorides?
No, it is not intended to treat chlorides.
Would this treatment plant treat nitrates?
Yes, as I described in the, in the sequence of events, uh, nitrates, uh, are converted to nitrogen gas and released atmospherically.
Okay. Um, and, Mr. Lee, in your opinion, should this draft discharge permit be made final?
Yes, I would agree.
Let me ask you, um, Mr. Lee, does it matter that from a technical perspective, does it make a difference for treatment that the waste is aggregated from the lodge and then the residences?
No, uh, we would consider all of these domestic wastewater, um, similar. If a municipality was, if we were designing this for a municipality, we would, you know, that's always aggregated waste.
And so in your opinion, is there any effect on the efficacy of treatment that this water came from both houses, residents, and condos and the lodge?
No, we would not anticipate any impact.
I have nothing further. Thank you. I will now make the witness available for cross.
Thank you, Ms. Mulcahy. Ms. Weatherly, do you have questions of Mr. Lee?
Uh, no questions from the department. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nasco.
I do, Madam Hearing Officer. Where, where should I be?
That end of the dais is great. Or if you want to sit behind the court or whatever, wherever you're more comfortable.
Mr. Lee, can you see me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I can kind of stay here, I think, um. Mr. Lee, good, good morning. You, you know, reading your testimony and hearing you today, it, it sounds like the system that you've designed does a pretty good job on, uh, nitrogen, TKN, and, and, uh, removing those from the waste stream. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is.
All right. And you talked about how this system works, but it's, it's designed to treat organic contaminants. Is that a fair summary of your, your, your statement, your, your testimony?
Uh, no, uh, it's designed to treat, uh, you are correct, is to treat organics as one element. It does also treat inorganics in the form of nitrates, um, ammonia. And it also, uh, treats, uh, for pathogenic organisms of bacteria.
All right. So things that, you know, basically are alive or, uh, organic in some sense. Is that right?
Uh, the nitrates would not be considered, uh, organic.
Right, got it. That'd be the, that'd be the inorganic that this would treat would be a nitrate, right?
That's correct.
You mentioned about this, you know, you wouldn't expect any aggregation to, to, uh, cause any issues with this treatment facility, but the reality is you don't really know what these, the villas and these homeowners are putting in their waste system, do you?
We would make the assumption that this is traditional domestic wastewater as we would if we were designing for any municipal system.
Sure, but if you're designing for a municipal system, there'd be more testing requirements than simply nitrates and chlorides, right?
Objection.
What's your objection?
Mister Lee did not testify about any testing requirements in his testimony and it's beyond the scope of his direct testimony.
He just testified that he did it the same as he would do for a municipal system, so I think.
Testified that he would design it the same, which is not the same thing.
Do you have another witness, uh, speaking to testing?
We do.
All right.
All right. Mr. Lee, as far as the design is concerned, I think you mentioned also that this is, the system is not designed to, uh, to, uh, uh, remove or abate chlorides. Is that an accurate statement?
That's correct.
All right. Now, you're, are you familiar with the regulations in New Mexico, the three-one-oh-three standards and the groundwater and surface, uh, ground and surface water protection regulations?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you realize there, there are some forty-six different contaminants identified in that, uh, regulation. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. And you're, you're, the proposal for this permit is to test for only three. Right? Nitrogen, chloride, which you've said your system does not remove, and TDS.
Objection.
Again, I think you're moving into testing and that'll be another witness.
He just testified that he, that the system is designed to remove nitrates, it's not designed to remove chlorides, and that the membranes work to remove solids.
I heard that.
That again goes to the design, not the testing and reporting.
Right.
And I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Hearing Officer, the, the, the ruling on my testimony?
Okay. So this is not the witness to talk about the testing following treatment. This is the witness who is talking about the design of the system.
All right. Well, let me rephrase that then, Mr. Lee. You said you made the assumption that the, the villages and the homeowners would, would put in traditional domestic waste into the system. Is that accurate?
Yes.
But that assumption you're making is really just that, an assumption, correct?
Yes.
And you have no way of verifying what each individual homeowner is putting down the drain? And this permit does not impose any such requirement, it doesn't?
There's no requirement in the draft permit.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I'll pass the witness, Madam Hearing Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Nasco.
Ms. Mulcahy, any follow up?
Yes, please. Sorry, I said that with my mic off. Let me ask you, Mr. Lee, if a homeowner had a septic tank, is there anything that would prevent that homeowner from dumping anything it wants into its septic tank?
No, you're correct.
And are septic tanks designed to treat PFAS?
No.
Are septic tanks designed to treat turpentine?
No.
Are septic tanks designed to treat medical waste?
No.
Are septic tanks designed to treat pharmaceuticals?
No.
Does it matter, Mr. Lee, what is going into the system in terms of effluent if you understand what's coming out of the system in terms of effluent?
I'm not sure that I understand the basis of that question. Effluent, understanding what is coming out, what is coming in, and the quality that's coming into a wastewater treatment plant is important in order to be able to predict what's going to come out as an effluent.
Sure. And Mr. Lee, in designing this facility, did you have any reason to believe that there would be mass quantities of the other 3103 regulated constituents, let's say uranium, coming into the system?
No, I did not. And in our conversations with NMD, these were not addressed as suspect constituents to be addressed.
And if you were to address in design of a wastewater treatment facility for heavy metals and toxic, other toxic constituents or herbicides and pesticides, what kind of facilities usually are designed to treat that?
Well, again, it would depend on what specific constituents we're trying to remove beyond what this plan is designed for, but you would most likely be going into reverse osmosis, maybe followed by carbon filtration or activated carbon filtration.
Oh, sorry. I apologize, Mr. Lee. I didn't mean to speak.
That's okay.
Would you expect those types of discharges to be coming from an industrial facility?
Again, it would depend on the industrial facility, but we do treat industrial facilities significantly different than we do from domestic wastewater to fully understand what the treatability of that wastewater is for downstream biological processes.
And Mr. Lee, did you have any reason to believe that Bishop's Lodge is treating something other than domestic wastewater?
No, I did not.
Okay. And in terms of treatment of domestic wastewater, how efficient is this membrane bioreactor treatment train?
Well, in terms of, of meeting the requirements that are listed in DP 75, draft permit is highly efficient. It, it will more than likely in most instances meet, easily meet, and most of the time exceed these limits.
And when you say these limits, do you mean the water quality standards?
I mean the limits that are proposed for, in the discharge permit 75.
Okay. Thank you. I have nothing further for Mr. Lee.
Thank you. Any reason not to excuse Mr. Lee?
I'm hearing, not to sir, but I would like to admit the exhibits in Mr. Lee's testimony, which are exhibits B through B19.
Thank you. Objections?
No objection.
Thank you. B through B19 are admitted, and thank you very much, Mr. Lee, for your testimony.
Thank you.
Now, let's take a 15 minute break so that we're not breaking into the middle of the next witness and return at 10:30. We are going to go to the applicant's second witness, Ms. Mulcahy.
Yes, thank you, Madam Hearing Officer. Just momentarily, if I may, I missed this this morning, but I would also like to note on the record that there's not just members of Protect Suki here, but there are also members of the Hills and Villas subdivision here in the public, in the comment, in the room.
Okay, thank you. Who's your second witness?
I'm going to call Mr. Boot Pierce to the stand, please.
Okay. You may sit wherever you're comfortable there or at the end of the dais, wherever you'd like. Mr. Pierce, would you spell your first and last name, please? With, with the microphone.
Larry L A R R Y Pierce, P I E R C E, but I go by the pseudonym Boot most of the time.
Like Mr. Randolph, right? The saxophone. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Ms. Mulcahy.
Mr. Pierce, could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Larry Dean Pierce Jr. I, again, I go by Boot.
Mr. Pierce, could you please state your title for the record?
I am the office manager, district office manager, and senior project manager for Gloria to Geoscience.
Okay. And Mr. Pierce, did you provide prefiled written direct testimony in this matter?
I did, yes.
Okay. And is your prefiled testimony what has been marked as exhibit A?
Yes.
Do you have any changes or additions to this testimony beyond what we filed in our notice of corrections?
No, nothing beyond that notice.
If you were to give the testimony in exhibit A today, would it be the same?
Yes.
Do you adopt the testimony in exhibit A here today?
Yes.
And could you please, Mr. Pierce, if you'll hold on just a moment, I'm going to bring up a summary here. There we go. Mr. Pierce, could you please provide a summary of your testimony today?
Sure, sure. So again, my name is Larry Pierce at Gloriato. We are, we have, are responsible for the sampling, reporting, and monitoring of the groundwater at the facility. The, the facility is, as previously mentioned, is a membrane bioreactor with a, with a UV disinfection and, and disposal, disposal area. What we have, have found is that looking at the monitoring wells MW1, MW2, and MW3, they demonstrate that there has been no impact to the underlying groundwater from the wastewater facility. We also sample for during, during periods of irrigation. We have, we have collected data that demonstrates that the, the effluent meets NMD discharge requirements related to the, to the groundwater reuse guidance with, from, from the NMD Groundwater Quality Bureau. So the draft DP 75 does impose sampling, monitoring, and reporting requirements that ensure compliance with the, with the permit, with 20.6.2 as well, and with all reuse guidance parameters. During the, during the irrigation season, the, the discharge, this Class 1A reuse is used for irrigation at the facility. During non-irrigation season, the discharge is sent to the low dose disposal area. So, and to this, at this time, the, the monitoring requirements within NMD DP 75 have been, have been met by the facility.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pierce. And you said that Bishop's Lodge conducts monitoring. Could you provide a bit more information about what kinds of monitoring Bishop's Lodge does?
Okay. Related to the, to the discharge, discharge permit DP 75, Bishop's Lodge conducts quarterly monitoring of the groundwater samples and effluent. These are for the parameters, the applicable parameters in 20.6.2. This includes monitoring well MW1, MW2, MW3, and effluent from the facility. They sample for TKN, they sample for nitrate, they sample for chlorides, and they sample for TDS. During the timeframe of the year when they are irrigating, using, using the reclaiming the water and using for irrigation, they also have additional sampling parameters that are in the, on either a weekly or biweekly basis. So they sample for ECOI on a weekly basis, they sample for BOD on a biweekly basis, and they have continuous turbidity sampling, that is, that is applied.
And so, Mr. Pierce, would it be accurate to say that Bishop's Lodge monitors effluent?
Yes.
Would it be accurate to say that Bishop's Lodge also monitors for groundwater impacts in the monitoring wells?
Yes.
Okay. And have the monitoring wells demonstrated any impact to groundwater quality?
No, they have not. They have not exceeded the NMD requirements.
And so would you say that the discharge is protective of groundwater quality?
Yes.
Okay. And after Bishop's Lodge conducts this monitoring, does it have to report the results to anybody?
Yes, these, these results are reported quarterly to the environment department.
Okay. And has Bishop's Lodge complied with its monitoring and reporting requirements?
Yes, we have.
Okay. And could you talk a little bit more, Mr. Pierce, about the, how we know that ground, whether groundwater is being impacted or not?
So we have the, the constituents that are applicable in the discharge permit. We sample for those on a quarterly basis. We can, we can, we submit that analysis to the department. To this point, we have not seen exceedances of those parameters that have been submitted to the department.
Mr. Pierce, Mr. Nasco brought up all of the other constituents that are in 3103. I believe he said there are 46 of them, and they include things like uranium, benzene, polyethylene, and antimony. Do you have any reason to believe that these types of constituents in 3103, like heavy metals and pesticides, would be present in the wastewater at Bishop's Lodge?
No, we, we, with the system treats domestic waste, and the environment department has determined that these are the most likely parameters for domestic waste, and so that is what, what we have to test for, or what we monitor for.
Mr. Pierce, do you have any reason to believe that Bishop's Lodge or the Hills and Villas is dumping toluene into the system?
I have no reason to know.
Do you have any reason to believe that the Hills and Villas is dumping PFAS into the system?
I have no reason to know.
Do you have any reason to believe that Bishop's Lodge or the Hills and Villas is dumping medical waste into the system?
I have no reason to know.
Do you have any reason to believe that the Hills and Villas are dumping pharmaceuticals into the system?
I have no reason to know.
Mr. Pierce, do you have an opinion on whether or not this permit should be made final?
I believe that it should be made final.
And what was your basis for that belief?
It was based on the, the analysis of the groundwater quality and the, the, or the, the sampling that is done on the site.
And Mr. Pierce, who conducts that sampling on the site?
Our, our organization does Gloria Geoscience.
And have you ever done sampling on the site?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And what analytical lab is used for that sampling?
Eurofin South Central. It is formerly Hall Environmental out of Albuquerque, New Mexico.
Is that a third party certified analytical lab?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Ms. Mulcahy. Ms. Weatherly, do you have questions with Mr. Pierce? All right. Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Said no questions. Mr. Nasco?
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer. Good morning, Mr. Pierce. Mr. Pierce, I was interested in your testimony because you said, where, you said that there's no impact to groundwater, and you're compliant not only with what this draft permit requires, but with 20.6.2. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, insofar as you're saying you're compliant with 20.6.2 3103, you haven't tested for any of these constituents, is that a fact?
I thought I said the applicable parameters.
Well, you know, you said applicable because they're, they're set forth in the draft permit, correct? All right. I'm not talking about the draft permit. I'm talking about the parameters in 3103. The identification of 46 different constituents that are known contaminants that the environment department is charged to not let enter groundwater. That's what I'm talking about. You said you're complying with 20.6.2. Did you not?
Objection. Asked and answered, and I would request that Mr. Nasco let the witness finish.
This is cross examination, yeah.
Okay. So one thing we do need to avoid stepping on the end of each other's sentences. Secondly, I do remember Mr. Pierce acknowledging that the, the testing did not cover all of the constituents identified under 3103, and it sounded as though Mr. Nasco was just trying to get him to confirm that as a setup to another question.
That's correct. That's, that's correct. Isn't it, Mr. Pierce, that you said you were compliant with 20.6.2, but yet you had never tested for the various constituents identified in 3103? That's accurate, correct?
We, we test for the parameters in our permit.
Only, correct?
Correct.
All right. So we're, we're in agreement that the rest of the parameters in 20.6.2 3103 have not been analyzed.
Objection. Asked and answered three times.
All right. I, I heard you. Again, he's setting this up. Go ahead.
She's interrupting my cross examination. It's totally inappropriate. Okay, that's a fact, isn't it?
We have not tested for all.
All right, great.
We have not tested for all of the parameters in.
Yeah, Ms. Mulcahy made a point with you and with a prior witness, Mr. Lee, that asked you, do you have any reason to believe that the homeowners of the lodge itself with its various different discharges was putting intoluene, benzene, and a variety of other substances into the wastewater? And you said you did not have any reason to believe, is that right?
Objection. I just want to say here, Mr. Nasco is mischaracterizing what I have said. I didn't say various different discharges. We have one discharge for the record.
Okay. So I heard Mr. Pierce say that he did not have reason to believe that the other constituents that the lodge is not testing for were in fact going to be introduced into the system, like I think you mentioned, the things associated with mining, for example. Um, but, uh, Mr. Nasco, please go ahead with your questioning. I think Mr. Pierce is doing fine, Ms. Mulcahy.
Mr. Pierce, so I just, I just want to make this clear for the record. Your testimony is that you have no reason to believe that these other contaminants identified in section three one oh three are in the wastewater, right?
No.
Have you ever tested the baseline characteristics of the groundwater underneath the previously failed disposal fields?
Objection.
It's a simple question. Yes or no?
Objection.
Hold on, Mr. Nasco.
There's, Mr. Naskow is mischaracterizing the facts and the evidence here. There are previously failed leach fields. There are no previously failed disposal areas, and Mr. Lee testified about as much.
All right. So, um, we'll go back now because I don't remember which word you, you.
I, I can, I, I can rephrase it. But I would like my cross-examination to, to, to go uninterrupted. This is totally inappropriate and would not be permitted in a court that, um, I, I want to know.
Objecting to mischaracterized evidence is totally.
Ms. Mulcahy, just a moment.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Pierce, have you ever tested the groundwater underneath the previously failed leach fields for any constituents whatsoever?
Yes.
What did you test for? Nitrites?
Yes, it was the parameters within the permit.
The same ones that we're talking about today, nitrates, chlorides, TDS. All right. Now, are you familiar with how, uh, uh, medical waste and pharmaceuticals are typically disposed in a liquid waste system?
I'm not a, I'm not a toxicologist, but I, I don't know exactly what you're trying to ask me.
Well, I think that, I'm, I'm following up on your counsel's question. He said, do you have any reason to believe that pharmaceuticals and medical waste have been put in this, uh, waste stream? And I think you said no. So I simply asked you if you have any knowledge as to the delivery system that is typically used for the disposal of medical waste and pharmaceuticals?
I'm assuming, um, um, the human body. Is that?
I'm just asking you, sir. I'm.
I mean, the human, the human body is one route, correct?
Okay. Now, let's go back to this, I have no reason to believe stable, which, which Mr., uh, Lee also testified to. You don't have any reason to believe that these various other contaminants are going to be entered into this waste stream. Yeah, I think we're in agreement that without a reverse osmosis system, metals and certain other constituents inorganics cannot be removed. Are you familiar with that?
Objection. Mr. Pierce did not testify about the design parameters of a wastewater treatment facility for industrial issues.
I think he testified specifically that it would require reverse osmosis.
Mr. Pierce testified.
Well done, Ms. Mulcahy. Um, I, I believe Ms. Mulcahy is right on the point that he was discussing sampling, reporting, and monitoring, not the design of the system. There are two other witnesses who may go there.
Uh, uh, he may have, but he, he specifically said, Madam Hearing Officer, that that would require reverse osmosis. That was his testimony, not mine.
Mr. Pierce never said that, Miss, Madam Hearing Officer. That was Gary Lee's testimony.
Exactly.
If he wants to ask Gary Lee about the design of the system, that's appropriate.
Right.
Not Mr. Pierce, who did not testify about that.
Again, we have moved from design of the system to sampling reporting.
All right, let's go back to what we do know then. It's your no reason to believe that these other contaminants are being introduced. Well, let's, I have no reason to believe it either, but let's say we're wrong. Mr. Pierce, you and I are wrong, and it does happen. You're not going to bear the risk of that. These downstream property owners are the ones who are going to bear that risk, aren't they?
We are following the requirements of the environment department and sampling for what we are required to sample for.
And nothing more.
And we do not sample for other parameters.
Pass the witness, your honor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nasco, Ms. Mulcahy, any read around.
I have nothing, Madam Hearing Officer.
All right. Thank you, Mr., uh, Pierce. Uh, and, um, did you offer the exhibits?
No, I was just going to give Mr. Pierce a moment to.
Okay.
Get back over here. Um, I would like Madam Hearing Officer to admit into the record what has been marked as, um, Exhibits A through A twenty-eight, which is Mr. Pierce's, uh, pre-file direct testimony and exhibit.
Do your objections.
Objection.
Thank, thank you very much. Exhibits A through A twenty-eight are admitted.
Thank you.
Do we have your third witness on deck?
Yes. Um, we could call Mr. Leader, which would be out of order from how we identified it in the pre-hearing statement, Madam Hearing Officer, um, because we have one witness that's only available on Wednesday morning. If that's okay with you, we could call Mr. Leader.
Wednesday morning.
Um, we could call Mr. Leader now, but Mr. Fusion in our pre-hearing statement was listed as the third witness, but he's only available Wednesday morning. So I just call Mr. Leader now, but it would be out of order if you're okay with that.
Okay. Yes, certainly. We should hear from Mr. Leader now, then we can talk about, uh, Mr. Fusion, uh, momentarily.
Okay.
Mr. Leader, go to wherever you're comfortable.
Okay.
If you would please spell your first and last name.
Leader.
Is your microphone on?
It's green. It's on.
What do you know? It's on. Uh, C-H-A-R-L-I-E, Charlie, Leader, L-B-D-E-R.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Ms. Mulcahy.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Leader, could you please state your title for the record?
Senior Associate.
Right. And where are you at Senior Associate, Mr. Leader?
The engineering firm of Asan and Sawyer.
Okay. Um, and Mr. Leader, did you file pre-filed written testimony here in this matter?
I did.
Okay. Um, and Mr. Leader, um, is your pre-filed written direct testimony identified as Exhibit B? Excuse me, Exhibit D as in dog?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and if you were to give this testimony live here today, would it be the same?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, Mr. Leader, do you have any changes or additions to the testimony in Exhibit D as in dog?
No.
Um, and, um, Mr. Leader, do you adopt the testimony in Exhibit D as in dog here today?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Leader, could you please provide a summary of your testimony?
I can, if I could see the slide. I believe it's, uh, slide nine. Yes.
Sure. Just one moment, Mr. Leader, and I'll share it.
Six, I believe.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Leader. What slide did you say you would like to see?
I believe it's slide six.
Sure. Let me share it now. Okay.
Well, I was close. Oh, that's slide seven. Just slide back to slide six.
Uh, that is slide six.
Oh, thanks. What?
That's slide six, right there.
Oh, I'm just looking at the numbers at the bottom. Oh, great. Thanks. Uh, basically five points that my testimony consists of. Expert witness testimony that I perform. One looks at the existing treatment plan, rather the previous treatment plan, and compares it to the new treatment plant, uh, the MBR-based treatment plant, and, you know, answering the question, is it a much better design? Uh, point number two is looking at the numeric limits that were placed in draft discharge plan seventy-five, and it compares those, are they reasonable for what is put in other discharge permits for, uh, plants treating domestic wastewater in northern Santa Fe County? Uh, the third point I looked at in terms of my testimony is, uh, is that treatment plant, was it designed for nitrogen removal? And how does it compare, compare to other treatment plants with which I'm familiar or even involved in the operation of, uh, how is this new Bishop's Lodge MBR treatment plant look in terms of the capability of being in its design for nitrogen removal? Point number four looks at, on the next slide, if we could slide to it, uh, is it doing, is the exit, the new Bishop's Lodge MBR-based treatment plant, uh, is it doing a good job of processing domestic wastewater? And is achieving, is it achieving compliance with, uh, what's been proposed in draft discharge permit DP seventy-five? Uh, the last point is, I've looked at is, is draft discharge permit DP seventy-five, is it going to protect groundwater quality and is it not going to result in concentrations that exceed the applicable standards in, uh, that particular standard that's cited there? And then lastly, uh, based on all the answers to the previous five questions, should the Groundwater Quality Bureau proceed with issuing the discharge permit, the draft discharge permit for, by the, uh, applic, the applicant? Uh, my answer to the first five questions is yes, and I can go into any details as to why I'm saying yes. Uh, I think the, with a yes answer to the first five items that I looked at, uh, it's certainly appropriate for the Groundwater Quality Bureau to proceed with issuing, uh, draft DP seventy-five, because it'll do a good job of meeting, the plant will do a good job of meeting those standards, and the data, the data exemplifies that quite clearly.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. Um, what, you said you looked at, um, the Bishop's Lodge old treatment plant and compared it with the design features of the new plant. Could you just talk briefly about some of the features of the new plant?
The new plant has several noteworthy features that will make it reliably meet the standards that are in draft DP seventy-five. First and foremost is what's going on at the headworks of the plant. Gary Lee did a very thorough, uh, job of getting rid of the stuff that would interfere with treatment, the rags, little bits of plastic, whatever, uh, stuff that's any bigger than two millimeters in size is getting pulled out so that the downstream treatment equipment will work very well. There's also a good equalization basin that will allow the downstream treatment process essentially to work at a constant flow rate and a very level, uh, mass loads of nitrogen compounds and, and BOD and other things in domestic wastewater, common to domestic wastewater, come into the treatment system and, and be removed. And essentially, it's coming at a constant rate. The biological organisms that work in the pre-anoxic basin, the uration basin, and the post-anoxic basin can really do a great job of removing that stuff. There's a downstream ultrafiltration MBR element that's removing suspended solids and viruses and bacteria. In fact, anything bigger than point zero four microns. You have, as you pointed out earlier, extremely clear water that's been treated, and that makes the downstream disinfection process by ultraviolet, ultraviolet light extremely powerful in inactivating and, and killing any, uh, organisms that might be present. This gives us essentially a very clear, uh, liquid or discharge into the low dose disposal system. It also gives us an effluent that meets all class one A standards for effluent reuse for domestic wastewater that the Groundwater Quality Bureau has had on its books for since January two thousand and seven.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. Um, have you ever worked in a wastewater treatment plant?
I have.
And which plant was that?
The South Side Water Reclamation Facility. It's owned by the Albuquerque Burnley County Water Utility Authority.
And you looked at, you also looked at five other wastewater treatment plants treating domestic waste in northern Santa Fe County. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And in terms of comparison, how does the Bishop's Lodge MBR treatment plant compare to these other plants that you've either run at Burnley, okay, at the Albuquerque Burnley County Water Utility Authority, or that you looked at for purposes of your testimony in terms of treatment?
It does a superior job to all five.
When you say superior, could you explain what you mean by that a little bit?
Much better job in producing clear water and disinfection, and I might add nitrogen removal.
And why is, why is that significant, Mr. Leader, in terms of effluent quality?
It allows the plant to meet the standard, rather the numeric limits that are published in draft discharge permit seventy-five.
Um, and let me ask you, uh, Mr. Leader, in your examination of the other wastewater treatment plants treating domestic waste in Santa Fe County, did any of those other treatment plants have monitoring requirements for PFAS in their permit?
None did.
Did any of those other plants have monitoring requirements for pharmaceuticals in their permit?
No.
Did any of those other treatment plants have monitoring requirements for medical waste?
No.
Did any of those other treatment plants have monitoring requirements for heavy metals?
No.
Do you have any reason to believe, Mr. Leader, that Bishop's Lodge would be discharging PFAS?
I have no reason to believe that.
Do you have any reason to believe that Bishop's Lodge would be discharging pharmaceuticals?
No.
Do you have any reason to believe that Bishop's Lodge would be discharging medical waste?
No.
Do you have any reason to, um, believe that Bishop's Lodge is taking constituents into its system other than what it's monitoring for?
No.
Mr. Leader, um, did you make any conclusions about whether the Bishop's Lodge treatment plant effluent would be able to meet the numeric limits stated in the draft DP seventy-five?
I did.
And what were your conclusions?
It will meet them on a routine basis.
Did you have, um, any conclusions? Did you make any conclusions about whether the discharge, the effluent will meet New Mexico water quality standards?
The effluent is tested for TDS, total dissolved solids, and for chlorides. And the data I saw showed that the tests that were performed, uh, the affluent is meeting the, it's less than the limits posted for uh, drinking water quality.
And does um, Bishop's Lodge, so I'm sorry, you said it's less than what's required for drinking water quality. So does that mean in terms of those two constituents, that the affluent is technically meeting drinking water quality for those two constituents?
Yes.
And let me ask you, does Bishop's Lodge also sample for total kildol nitrogen or TKN?
Yes, it does.
And what have been the stamp, any, have there been sampling results for TKN?
Yes, there have been sampling results.
And what were the results for TKN in terms of the draft discharge permit limit?
The value for TKN is kind of tied in with uh, see TKN. If I'm not mistaken, one of my slides.
If I brought up your slide, would that refresh your recollection?
Yes. Ah, here we are. It's tested. Let's see, could we jump to another slide? Where the report?
Not this slide, Mr. Leader?
Ma'am.
Sorry to make everybody in the room dizzy. Would it be this slide, Mr. Leader?
Uh, that's the one. Yes, what I wanted to be absolutely certain. What was the result? I was going to blurt out that I believe in terms of total kildol nitrogen, it wasn't detected in one of the quarterly samples, and that indeed is the case. Uh, it was extremely low in the fourth quarter.
And what does not detected mean?
It means that based on the EPA standards for maximum cadantium level that can be rather maximum method detection, that's the word I want. Method detection limits that EPA set. It was, if it's not detected, it means it's less than that standard that EPA has set for testing by third parties.
Would it be fair to say that it's so low it can't even be detected?
Yes.
Thank you. And um, does the Bishop's Lodge also sample for E coli?
Yes.
And what was the result of the E coli sampling?
Well, as stated here, the third-party independent test lab did not detect any E coli either in the sample for the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-four or the uh, sample in the first quarter for two thousand and twenty-five. The data certainly points out the fact that the disinfection job is doing a very good job.
And so because it wasn't detected, was that, does that also mean that it was so low that there's basically none in the affluent?
None that can be detected as established by the current method detection limit set by EPA.
And did Bishop's Lodge also sample for um, nitrates?
Yes.
And what was the result of the nitrate sampling?
Here we see it was less than seven milligrams per liter in the fourth quarter and three milligrams per liter in the first quarter sample.
And Mr. Leader, um, I'm looking here at the slide in your testimony, which I believe is slide twenty. And I see a picture up in the upper right-hand corner. Could you please describe what that is?
That's a jar of the treated affluent following disinfection that was collected on that date, which was April twenty-third two thousand and twenty-five. It also shows a reading that was taken for turbidity. And that sample was measuring point two seven seven nephelometric turbidity units, which stands for NTU. Looks just like the sample.
Um, I have nothing further. Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer.
Thank you, Ms. Mulcahy. Ms. Weatherly, any questions?
Nothing from the department.
All right, Ms. Weatherly said no. Mr. Nasco.
As you can imagine, I have a few. Good morning, Mr. Leader. You know, I was really interested in uh, your direct examination when Ms. Mulcahy asked you whether you had an opinion that the resorts discharge comply with all water quality standards. Do you remember that question?
I don't.
Now she asked you that, and you know what your response was? It was, you hesed your bets. You said it complied with all the constituents set forth in the draft permit.
That's correct. The constituents in the draft permit.
But it's, we don't know whether it complies with all water quality standards, Mr. Leader, isn't that true?
It complies with the standards that are in the discharge permit.
All right, uh, Madam Hearing Officer, I'm going to ask you to kindly direct the witness to answer my question.
So, Mr. Leader, as I understand it, the question is whether DP seventy-five uh, contains uh, limits for all potential water pollutants. I think that's what he's trying to.
Well, I'm not asking if the permit does. I can, I can stipulate that it does not. What I'm asking is whether he knows if the discharge itself will comply with all water quality standards set forth in three one oh three.
Even though it's not listed, right, in DP seventy?
Correct. I don't know.
And so this whole thing is based on, it seems to me, Mr. Leader, please disagree with me if you want, but the concept of this permit application appears to be based on a reason to believe that these constituents are not present. That the only ones that we're going to see are the ones set forth in the draft permit. Isn't that an accurate summary of what's going on here?
Could you repeat your question?
Yeah, well, I'm getting at here, getting at here. It's not trying to get technical here. Let's, let's get down to where the rubber meets the road. The whole concept of this permit application is based on some very limited testing for constituents set forth in DP seventy-five, right?
That's correct.
All right. And with respect to the other constituents, it's all based on a quote, reason to believe, end quote, that they simply won't be present. So we're not going to test for them, and we're not going to consider them.
Objection?
Isn't that correct?
Well done. Uh, what would the objection be?
I think he's mischaracterizing what Mr. Leader said. Mr. Leader said he never said, quote, reason to believe.
You know, this is, I would, I object to these interruptions.
I don't mind him you asking that question. I mind him saying Mr. Leader said something that he didn't. If he wants to ask a question about reasonable belief, that's fine. I don't want him saying something that Mr. Leader.
So, so Ms. Mulcahy just went through a litany of questions going through each constituent of pharmaceuticals, medical waste, and asking if he had a reason to believe that they would be in the discharge permit. I am asking him an appropriate cross-examination question that this is based on a reason to believe and no facts.
And, and that's.
Isn't that true?
Hold on, we're just going to talk one at a time.
That's my question. I want an answer.
Yes, all right. Again, Mr. Nasco, please don't talk over the, the rest of us at the moment. I, I do understand the question you're asking. Um, Mr. Leader, sometimes questions aren't posed in exactly the words that perhaps um, uh, you would have asked them yourself, and yet I think you understand the underlying question here that Mr. Nasco is asking. Which is the fact that certain constituents are being tested for and not others seems to be based on whether you would have reason to believe or would expect to find them in that uh, water. Can you address that?
I can't address that because that very question was not part of my expert witness testimony.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Leader. Appreciate the candor. Let me ask you, 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 you'd mentioned you, you looked at uh, five uh, different uh, systems in Santa Fe County, I believe. Is that, is that, did I get that right? Or northern New Mexico?
Northern Santa Fe County.
Okay, great. And, and my question to you, sir, is are you familiar with the location of the this uh, uh, leach field in relation to the downstream wells in, in Tassuki?
Objection, Madam Hearing Officer. Mr. Nasco is again mischaracterizing the evidence.
I just asked him if he's familiar with it.
There is no leach fields being utilized at all. The draft discharge permit does not provide permit coverage for a leach field. Mr. Lee testified to that effect. And again, Mr. Leader did not have anything in his testimony about any leach fields.
All right, let me uh, handle it this way for the moment and see if this works better uh, to cut down on interruptions. Um, Mr. Leader, I, you're, you're an expert, obviously. I'm hoping that to the extent you are posed a question by really anyone uh, that either uh, does not track with what you actually said or as you identified just a few moments ago, was not actually within the scope of your testimony um, that you will say so. And uh, let's see if maybe we can get through the Q and A a little uh, smoother that way.
Yeah, it's just really not that difficult. I, I really wanted to know, Mr. Leader, if you're familiar with the location of these downstream wells from the discharge point at Bishop's Lodge.
Other than you're stating that they're downstream, I am not familiar with their specific locations.
Are you aware that there are hundreds of wells downstream from Bishop's Lodge?
I'm going to object again.
Okay, um, overruled, uh, let's continue, Mr. Leader.
Yes, there are.
You're aware of that?
Yes.
And these five uh, facilities that you looked at, did any of them have as many wells immediately downstream as the downstream wells from Bishop's Lodge?
The facility, one of the facilities that I listed was treatment facility for Santa Fe Opera. I believe there are downstream, probably downstream domestic wells.
You don't, you don't know the, the number?
I do not.
And how it compares to the number that are downstream from Bishop's Lodge?
I do not.
All right. Let me ask you a question. This permit, I, I was looking through it. There's no prohibition in this draft permit to discharge uh, hazardous materials, is there?
The draft discharge permit can turn, contains limits or treating contains limits based on treating domestic wastewater. Those limits posted in the permit are for E coli, BOD five, total nitrogen. And there's also a standard for turbidity.
No other standard for hazardous materials, correct? So presumably someone could, someone could put into this system one of the three one oh three constituents that is a hazardous material and it would be perfectly permissible under this permit, correct?
I, that's conjecture and I can't say.
Thank you. I'll pass the witness, Madam Hearing Officer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nasco. This would come, Mulcahy, any redirect?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Leader, in your career, how many discharge permits would you say you've worked on?
I'm trying to remember the exact ones that I prepared, uh, permit applications. Did one for uh, Water Authority, South Side Water Reclamation Plant, their soils amendment facility. Did one for the city of Alamacordo that was doing affluent reuse. I did one for the wastewater treatment plant for Los Campanas. That's one of the five facilities I named. And let's see. I'm sure there were others, but I know those three come to mind and I as the uh, effectively the operator in responsible charge, I was signing discharge monitoring reports that Albuquerque Burnley County Water Utility Authority was turning in for its affluent reuse applications. I was signing those as the, the operator in charge, responsible charge.
Okay, Mr. Leader, um, and any of those permits that you previously worked on, did they require sampling and monitoring for every single one of the forty-six constituents in thirty-one oh three?
No.
Have you ever seen a permit in your experience that requires testing for every single one of the constituents in thirty-one oh three?
The only permits I've seen where that has been, no, they haven't. Sometimes they required a testing once during the permit period.
For every single one of the forty-six constituents?
Most of them.
And what kind of facilities were those that required that?
Those were the larger treatment facilities that were treating primarily domestic wastewater. But they may have had a customer, a hospital, uh, an industry that was using the uh, service of wastewater treatment. And in those rare cases, the groundwater quality bureau made a request uh, rather included requirement to test for a number of those compounds once during the five-year permit period.
And to clarify, were those facilities that did have to test for some additional constituents? Were any of them facilities that only treated domestic wastewater and nothing else?
No.
Um, and when we talk about the four constituents that are in the draft discharge permit seventy-five that um, Mr. Nasco said have a reason, reason to believe that they are present? What is that base, that reason based on, that belief based on?
Really? I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Sure. Draft discharge permit seventy-five requires the sampling and monitoring for four constituents. Is that requirement based on some type of scientific data?
Those four constituents?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Could you explain that a little bit, please?
The biggest concern with protecting groundwater quality in New Mexico, and this goes back to like the seventies where a lot of people had domestic wells that were contaminated with nitrates and ammonia. And the total nitrogen standard of ten milligrams per liter for drinking water was, was not being met. And the focus on the environment department for many years to protect drinking water quality has been. to protect drinking water quality has been yeah, the total nitrogen to less than ten milligrams per liter to make it safe drink, particularly safe to drink for a children's six months or less. Avoid the avoid the avoid the incidence of blue baby, which can occur if you are drinking high water with a high nitrogen content. And that has been the primary focus in improving groundwater quality in New Mexico, going back to the seventies. Remove nitrogen.
And does the Bishop's Lodge treatment plant remove nitrogen?
It does.
Okay. Mr. Leader, are you aware of whether there are any standards for pharmaceuticals in thirty-one oh three of the water quality regulations?
I'm not aware that there are.
I have nothing further. Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer.
Okay, thank you. Any reason not to excuse Mr. Leader?
I would I would like to admit Mr. Leader's exhibits, Madam Hearing Officer. If I may please, I would like to admit exhibits D as in dog through D twenty.
Objections? Thank you. D through D twenty are admitted. I thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Leader.
Thank you.
So we are approaching the lunch hour. I'm not averse to breaking a little early before we come back at one, but I did have a request to offer public comment before lunch. Is Mr. Mitchell here still? Oh, okay, terrific. So I'll take a couple of public comments, starting with Mr. Mitchell. Obviously, we'll come back at one. I'll take as much public comment as people are here to give, but I don't want to waste this time. Mr. Mitchell, you can come to that table or either end of the dais, wherever you're comfortable. Thank you. Thank you. And all y'all get to see how this is done. I will ask you to spell your first and last name. And I have to swear, ask you to swear or affirm, and then I will start a stopwatch and ask you to keep your comment to three minutes. If you have more to say than can be fit into three minutes, you are welcome to submit written public comment to Mr. Lopez behind me or Ms. Jones, and it will become part of the record. So, Mr. Mitchell, if you would state your first and last name and spell it.
My name is Mark Mitchell, M A R K, M I T C H E L L.
All right. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
I'll start your three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me time to speak on behalf of this issue. Today, I'm representing current sitting Governor Earl Samuel from the Pueblo of Tisukie. And in three minutes, let me see if I can summarize what we have to say with regards to the issue at hand. One of the things that we want to make sure is one that if the Bishop's Lodge can invest in tying into the sewer systems of the city of Santa Fe or the county of Santa Fe, that's a recommendations that we're asking relocate the leach fields to ensure that there is difference in elevation between little Tisukie and the leach field. Placing of the leach field at a higher elevation will increase the natural flotation of the effluents before it reaches the little Tisukie and the groundwater. And again, we have a whole slew of information that we want to be a part of, and for the record, as we move forward. The other request that we have or were demanding to have is one that the Pueblo have a daily monitoring report and review and compare and to compare the Pueblo's quality water water standards. Also, the groundwater monitoring wells to be tested, the water quality near the leach field. If there is a groundwater well, the Pueblo should receive the water quality reports. Also, a liability plan and funding. If the system fails for the downstream communities, is Bishop's Lodge ready to move on that? Also, with along those same lines, sampling of the effluent to determine the pharmaceutical levels after treatment to conduct a sampling from the monitoring well to determine the pharmaceutical levels that have reached the groundwater. As the surface-to-ground depth determine and assess the leach field depth. Otherwise, we we want to make sure that, one, we're protecting the groundwater along with the surface flow. We are a tribal government, and therefore we should be at the table at the very beginning of this issue. It's for the love of our people. It's for the love of the animals and the environment. It's why we do what we do. And I want to make sure that we're on record because there's nobody else like Tisukie Pueblo indigenous peoples, and we are downstream. And so I hope that this body can understand where we sit. It's for human life, it's for wildlife, plant life. And lastly, because you all don't aren't native indigenous people, we utilize the surface flow at every ceremony. And we also have our internal own environmental departments that take care of testing our waters on the real Tisukie as our sister Pueblos do up north as well. Though we're constantly checking, we didn't have to. But we found in past that when our people got sick, that's where they got sick from. So, for the record, we want to make sure that, one, we're at the table on the G to G, government to government. And as we move forward, you know, we're willing to submit all our our documents. And also, I guess, as we as we learned about this issue, we took it straight to EPA in the very beginning, because nobody came to us saying that, hey, we're gonna do this. And since nineteen seventy or thereafter, whenever they were established up there, nobody ever told us that this is what was happening. So I hope that we reach your minds eye, and we painted this picture in your minds eye as to there is a whole community of indigenous peoples down the street. We're heavily going to be impacted because of this. So therefore, we absolutely oppose this. Appreciate the time. Again, my name is Mark Mitchell, former governor from the Pueblo of Tisukie. Thank you.
Thank you. I will start with, please hold your applause. I'll start with the first. Again, we'll come back at one o'clock for all of this, but I'll start reading through the names, and we'll just take a few more. Frank Morbillo. Morbillo, thank you. Please correct me if I mispronounce your name. Mr. Morbillo, would you just state and spell your first and last name?
Yes, it's Frank Morbillo. F R A N K. M O R B I L L O.
And Mr. Morbillo, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. I'll start your time.
Thank you. Well, I I really appreciate the opportunity to talk today. The concern at hand is very important to the community of Tisukie. This has been a huge learning experience for our community, caught off guard last June by getting news that this plan was set to happen and go in motion first as discharge into the creek. Now, what's been happening since the beginning of this year, as far as I know, discharge into a leach field. Recently, I found out the class of this wastewater is considered Class 1A wastewater. And in the amount that's currently being discharged into the Tisukie, excuse me, the Bishop's Lodge leach field is fifteen thousand gallons per day. And the hearing here, I understand today, is to increase that amount to thirty thousand gallons a day. The concern with that is the type of wastewater that this is. It's, as it was discussed earlier, this is fine for watering plants, but it's not potable water. You cannot drink it. You shouldn't bathe in it. You shouldn't rinse the food. You're going to eat with it. So that makes it subject to the quality of water that we want in our wells in Tisukie. I think this location for the leach field, in my opinion, is a is a location of convenience for where it's is on their property. In reality, for us, it's near the Tisukie Creek. It's fifteen feet to groundwater. It's within a flood zone or on the very boundaries of a flood zone. My understanding, and I I could be wrong on this, but the the system that's designed to put this into the into the leach field is a low-pressure system to make sure that the water spreads evenly throughout the leach field. And the concern with that is that it's it's somewhat maximizing the effort of getting that wastewater into the ground. And that's a concern because it's only fifteen feet from our drinkable water in the valley. I I brought this topographical map of Tisukie in today to demonstrate what's happening to all the water that comes down within the area of Bishop's Lodge. When you take a look at this this topo of of the area, there's sort of a funnel around the whole area between the mountains that are on either side of the big Tisukie and little Tisukie Creek. Little Tisukie Creek is that is the creek that runs right by the leach field and the treatment plant. That area creates a funnel of water that comes down off the land and straight down the creek and through the valley and the village of Tisukie. The concern here is also for what's happening on the surface. The surface water is still this one-hated water. When we have storms and we have terrible storms in the area with with, you know, examples in the last year, we had a hundred-year type of storm that hit our area. I've seen storms of, you know, two and a half inches in forty-five minutes. And that promotes runoff. It's going to sweep all that water that's on the land into the creek and 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 through the system, and some of that can percolate down and become our groundwater. So there's there's a huge concern here for our community. So I would want it to be on the record that I oppose the permit that's being asked to go forward today. That's DP seventy-five on the basis that it has an awful lot of risk associated with it for our community, for the Tisukie Pueblo community, and every community downstream from here.
Thank you, Mr. Morbillo. I will, we don't have a way of accepting something like that, so what I do is I take a photo of it, and the photo of it will go into our record.
Please do.
All right.
And and take a low-level photo so you can see the topo of the land.
All right.
That's very important.
Thank you. Is David Schlesinger Schlesinger here? Yes, absolutely. Bernadette Romero Hadameo. Hello. If you would state and spell your first and last name, or all three of them, maybe.
Sure. My name is Bernadette Romero Hadameo. That is B E R N A D E T T E R O M E R O J A R A M I L L O.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So thank you, Madam Hearing Officer. Again, my name is Bernadette Romero Hadameo. This week, I should be making lasting memories with my ten-year-old daughter, celebrating the final days of her fifth year of school. Instead, I have chosen to be here at this critical hearing because protecting my daughter's water, health, and future is more important than anything else. I am a multi-generational resident of the Tisukie Village, and I am the youngest of Juan and Rosina Romero's ten children. My parents have always been dedicated to serving the Tisukie community, and they have taught me the importance of doing the same. Because of their example, I feel a deep responsibility to protect and care for this special place, not just for today, but for future generations. My father was one of the founders of the Tisukie Fire Department. My parents, along with other community members, they fought for the Tisukie Elementary School to be reopened for the Tisukie Village, Tisukie Pueblo, and the other communities around in the early seventies. And they fought for our kids to have education. My great-grandparents, great-great and grandparents were farmers who lived and worked on this land. For them, it wasn't just about making a living. It was about being a stewardship. It was about caring for the land so it could be sustained for future generations. That sense of responsibility was passed down through our family. My siblings and I feel incredibly blessed to live in this village and on the very land that our ancestors have protected. Today, like many of our community, I am committed in honoring that legacy, ensuring that what we value most about Tisukie is it's preserved not only for us, but for others who come after us. Tisukie is more than just a home. It is our heart. It is our history. It is our future of our community. At the center of it all, water, the pristine waterways, pristine waterways, our streams, our aquifers, and more than just nature features. They are lifelines of people, wildlife, and the land itself. They feed our aseca's and provide clean drinking water to the village and the countless families downstream. I am one of those downstream residents. Water is a vital resource, and it is now under serious threat, and the threat comes when the N MED decision and wanting to approve this permit allows the resort to dispose a partially treated water waste into an undersized leach field in close proximity proximity to the aquifer in the little Tisukie Creek. This undersized leach field is in the flood zone, which we have seen the impacts of our rains with our own eyes. This permit opens the door to pollution of our precious water resource surrounding environment. Even more concerns, there's no safeguards in place to monitor and many substances that are being in the down that are being placed down the drain by the resorts, thousands of guests, and the eighty-three residential homes on the hillside. The risk of contamination is real. With highly permeable soil and a shallow water table, make pollution not just possible, but inevitable. This puts our community directly at danger. The current regulations don't truly protect us because anyone can pour almost anything down the drain. And community members are left to in the dark of what's actually in the water. What you will be, what you will be willing, would you be willing to live near the site where the pollution is real and growing concern? What happens when the state of the art system, what will happen when this state of the heart system fails? If a homeowner in Tisukie tried to dispose of wastewater in a way that threaten our neighbors' drinking water, they would be stopped immediately. This is what environmental injustice looks like. The people making decisions, the executives, the investors, the state officials signing off on these permits. They don't live here. They don't rely on well water. Their children don't drink from the aquifers. They won't feel the impact of these choices, but we will. Our families will. Our children will. I want to be on record that I oppose the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hadameo. All right. Hold your applause. We'll take a break for lunch, and the next name I have is Mr. Serafkin. So we'll begin with Mr. Serafkin at one. Thank you all. We are back following a lunch break, and we're going to turn to non-technical public comment. There are just a few things about that. One, I will be calling on you in the One, I will be calling on you in the order in which you sign the sign in sheet. So if you're here to offer public comment and haven't yet, put your name on the sheet, please go and do so. If you are on the platform looking to offer public comment, apparently chat doesn't work. So we ask that you raise your digital hand. And in the event you have any trouble doing that, please send an email to Luis Lopez, who's behind me here. L U I S dot L O P E Z at E N V dot N M dot gov G O V. This is not the only opportunity you'll have to offer public comment. There will certainly be more opportunities tomorrow and in a particular one P M tomorrow. Other times as as they offer themselves up as opportunities. So our first public commenter, oh, just a few more things. I'm going to ask you to state and spell your first and last name for the transcript. I'll ask you to swear or affirm to tell the truth because that's what the rules require. And I will ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. So this is Mr. Serafkin at the desk. Mr. Serafkin, would you please state and spell your name for the transcript?
Yeah, my my name is Eric Serafkin. It's E R I C and then S I R O T K I N.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm here today not as a lawyer, but as someone living three doors or more appropriately, three wells downstream from the lodge. Too often arguments get lost in these processes. Our position is not about scare tactics. It's about law, but it's about facts. To my neighbors on the hill across the valley and to our neighbor Bishop's Lodge. This has nothing to do with Bishop's Lodge having a system that is so much better than it was before. Kudos to them. That's a good thing to start with. It has nothing to do with what they filter out, but it has everything to do with what they don't identify or filter for. The Bishop's Lodge experts have confirmed this. They show a gross lack of knowledge on PFAS and their sources or how pharmaceuticals could end up in the water and in our species in Lake Mead or how, you know, the studies perhaps, how fish reacted to hormones. Let's talk delivery systems. Have clothes washed that have polyester in them, plastic in dishwaters, the little packets. Can Bishop's Lodge going to ask its guests to be medication free? Let's show a hands of how many people here take medication.
Mr. Serafkin, direct your comments this way.
Yeah, it 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 has everything to do with how we want to live as a society and as a planet. It has everything to do with accountability, of which here there really is little. It has everything to do with trust and the role of government to protect the health and safety of our communities. We can't count on the lodge to essentially police themselves. Profit industries, as we've seen in prisons, leave justice lacking. Government must say pump it up the hill. Government must say we need the six leach fields. The government must say we need carbon filtration and reverse osmosis. The government must deny permits that can harm the environment. And then we can work together for solutions. But spend the money to save the planet, our valley, my drinking water. It needs to tell them if contaminants are present, they have to stop and start the trucks rolling again. The permit lets them pollute for months and months on end. For what happens on accountability? The artist in a home on the hill, a printmaker, uses chemicals to produce great art. There's MSDS sheets on how to dispose. It gets dumped in the drain down with done with roundup, not quite, pour it down the drain. EPS says PFAS has caused cancer, clothing, shampoos, issues of pharmaceuticals. We are on the cutting edge today, the changes that are taking place. And we're arriving at this point at that time. And usually the saturation is of my own land so that I can become accountable. In December, I'm just going to show this to be finishing up. In December of twenty twenty four, a most graphic example arose in my yard when some white sludge came down a stream from Bishop's Lodge. A Bishop's Lodge employee made the decision to dump this into the creek and just put it in the creek. And they had promised us, they promised EPA, they promised N MED, they would not dump into the little Tassuki tree creek. And this was a flashing there, but this was not a municipal system with its transparency and goals to protect the environment. But you can see here that all of a sudden this appeared in my yard in the creek. Now, it's about trust then. What can you do to assure the future here? And so we have to work on things they don't identify and and filter out. And we know that finally Bishop's Lodge knows that a system like this is subject to human error. It's subject to other things, but we're on the cutting edge. New Mexico's environment is very important. And finally, Bishop Lodge argues, there are septics in the valley and they don't function. It's a non-issue. These are the distractions. How many dump thirty thousand gallons a day into their septic? N MED should do its duty, check such systems for everybody and hold the discharger accountable. Something sadly, if this permit is approved, is impossible to do here.
Thank you, Mr. Serafkin. Let's just assume the applause. Ryan Swan Heinz. Ryan Swan Heinz. Would you state and spell your name for the transcript?
First name Patrick Ryan, middle name Swazel Heinz. S W A Z O H I N D S.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
As many of you know, the Pueblo had great concerns over the initial plan to discharge ethylent directly into the little Tassuki Creek, which flows directly into the Rio Tassuki and to our Pueblo. Our number one concern has always been in maintaining the water quality of the watershed, which necessarily includes the tributary creeks, the main waterways and the groundwater. The Rio Tassuki water should provide sources of water which the Pueblo has relied on since time immemorial and that we continue to rely on. Not only does this watershed supply water for our ceremonies and traditional life ways, we also use the water to irrigate our USDA certified organic crops, crops which are an important source of healthy nutrition for our Pueblo members. With the impacts of climate change, food insecurity for Pueblo members and the scarcity of clean water in New Mexico, the Pueblo Tassuki is already an overburdened community and we have to take care of the resources we rely on. The Pueblo has extensive knowledge and data that we continue to gather as we monitor these water sources. We adhere to high standards of water quality as detailed in our water quality standards because traditionally we use the water as primary contact as it flows through the watershed and to our Pueblo. We are deeply invested in maintaining these water quality standards. The Pueblo is already already dealing with exceedances to our water quality standards, but we are unable to enforce these standards because these exceedances are coming from upstream non-point sources, which this groundwater permit could increase. This has the potential to add to overburdening our water resources, quality and availability, all of which impact our traditional practices and our agricultural fields. We want to make sure that DP seventy five permit for groundwater discharge from a wastewater treatment plant to a leach field will have no adverse impact on the watershed, given that we already impacted by the leach fields of our upstream neighbors with additional burden of runoff from pastured animals along the river. That proper sampling baseline data and continued monitoring are in place to maintain the quality of the water that will flow to our Pueblo. As we have been, as we have been seeing in the last few years, snow melt, runoff, erratic rains, erosion upstream have already wreaked havoc to the integrity of the Tassuki watershed, impacting surface water, groundwater and habitat. We are concerned with how this new plan will deal with the contamination from pharmaceuticals, indocrinus disruptors and PFOS. In treated wastewater, these contaminants contaminants have serious adverse effects on our health. And we know very little at this point how these chemicals move through leach fields and into groundwater. As a downstream neighbor, we are deeply concerned about maintaining our water quality and that this new plan relying on the groundwater discharge will have no adverse impacts on the watershed.
Thank you.
I also just wanted to give my title, which is Environmental Biologist for Pueblo Tassuki Department of Environment and Natural Resources.
Thank you very much. I'm having a little trouble. Let's imagine the applause. I'm having a little trouble with the handwriting on the next one. It could be Bruce Uchar or Budfield Bruce. If your first and last name start with a B. No, all right. I'll I'll come back. Steve Romero. Again, if these folks come back, I'm happy to accept their comment. Denise Ramonas. If you would please spell your first and last name for the transcript.
Certainly. It's Denise, D E N I S E Ramonas, R A M O N A S, as in Sam.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. I'll start your time.
Sure. As I just stated, my name is Denise Ramonas and we own a home in the hills and villas at Bishop's Lodge. We've lived there for approximately five years. We built our home there. Our neighborhood are basically the customers of the Bishop's Lodge wastewater plant. When the new wastewater system was needed, the lodge evaluated several options and selected the state of the art MBR wastewater treatment plant technology as the best solution, a technology manufactured by New Terra, N E U T E R R A. Under the terms of this, the shared facilities agreement, our HOA is contractually required to pay a significant portion of the cost of the new wastewater system. We paid approximately thirty three percent of the cost. We also paid the same percentage of the cost for they they colloquially call it the leach field, but this morning I was told there was no leach field, that it's a low dosing disposal field. I think I got the technology right that was added at the request of our neighbors from Tassuki. As I am aware, there were no engineers that said that this additional field was necessary, that the plant could stand as originally built. The lodge contracted with TLC Plumbing for the installment of this system. TLC Plumbing is the leading, if not the gold standard, plumbing wastewater infrastructure installation company in New Mexico and has been in business since nineteen eighty seven. They have a stellar reputation. Prior to construction, there were two thirty day comment periods before construction was started. There was little to no opposition at that time to the project. The Tassuki concerned residents waited until the project was completed and our money had been spent. This current protest really isn't an eleventh hour protest. It's thirteen hours of thirteen hours of it's really too late to be complaining about it. To our, we've invited the concerned residents to come and view the plant in operation and to learn about how it operates. My knowledge, none or very few have come to take up that opportunity to learn about the system and to be informed. As time has gone on, the claims and concerns of the concerned residents have become more and more alarming, but baseless. There are signs up and down Bishop's Lodge Road that say that Bishop's Lodge is causing cancer, polluting little creek, little Tassuki Creek, when not one drop of wastewater is going into the creek that is using the wastewater as tap water. Likewise, it's not true. Is sacrificing the environment for corporate greed. That one, I guess, is subject to interpretation. The latest claims are that the New Mexico Environment Department doesn't know what it's doing and is applying the wrong regulations. And this morning we started to hear, and this has been going on for a while, that the wastewater facility is dumping pharmaceuticals, PFAS into Tassuki Creek, notwithstanding the fact that not one drop of water is going into the creek. With all due respect, and I do really respect and know many of my neighbors in Tassuki, these claims are unfounded and they are scare tactics to turn the neighborhood and the community against Bishop's Lodge. The Tassuki residents have a history of opposing change. Maybe a lot of us don't like change. They didn't like it when Santa Fe Institute was considering putting a facility in Tassuki. I guess the last thing that I will note is that I understand, and I haven't independently verified this, and I'm under oath, so I want to be careful about this, that a similar wastewater system was selected and has been operating at the Tassuki Casino, which is owned by the Pueblo and that they have even won an environmental award for that wastewater system.
Would you wrap up, please?
We're all neighbors. We all want to live in this beautiful place. And I would just encourage our neighbors to learn about the system and to be reasonable in their requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramonas. I know that we have at least one person on the platform. I'm going to call a few more names from those in the room and then I will move to the platform. Chris Romero. Mr. Romero, would you spell your first and last name for the transcript?
Chris Romero, C H R I S, R O M E R O.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
I'll start your time.
Okay. Once again, if Bishop's Lodge or anybody in our in a customer would be willing to drink this water, I think that we wouldn't have an issue. But I'm not so sure they would be willing to drink that water. So as I stated, my name is Chris Romero. I have one of ten siblings residing in Tassuki raised by Juan Rosi Juan and Rosina Romero, seven A Grego Hill Road, located above the market. Our parents, along with their parents, grandparents, great grandparents, were all born and raised in Tassuki. Grego Hill Road is named in the honor of my great grandfather, Jose Agapito Grego. According to the eighteen sixty census for Rio Tassuki, he was listed as a one year old while he was, while his father Jacinto Grego was recorded in the same census. Our family has a long history of Tassuki, in the Tassuki Valley. Our family has a long history of Tzusuki, in the Tzusuki Valley. My father dedicated his life to protecting and serving it. While my grandfather, Porcopia Cunha, irrigated Rancho Escondido and worked for the moors along the Little Tzusuki River, growing fruits, vegetables, and alfalfa to support both his employer and his family, just short of where Bishop's Lodge is located. In the early nineteen seventies, my father in San Peters co-founded the Tzusuki Volunteer Fire Department. I proudly joined the fire department when I returned to New Mexico four years ago. Also, in the early nineteen seventies, my father founded and led Las Tris Villas, an organization representing Chupadero, Rio Medio, and Tzusuki. The group objected to Dr. Bebo's decision, who was then the superintendent of the Santa Fe Public Schools, who closed Tzusuki Elementary with the intent for transporting children to Carlos Gilbert Elementary. It never happened. Our children never attended school in Santa Fe. I left Tzusuki in nineteen eighty-five in New Mexico in nineteen ninety. After graduating from Eastern New Mexico University and receiving a commission in the United States Army, I spent thirty years away from home. I retired forty years ago to return to the Tzusuki Village, which my father loved and my children considered home despite not being raised here. As a civil affairs officer in the United States Army, my role involved working as a representative for the United States government, government to enhance stability in various communities, including villages, towns, and cities in regions of war-torn places around the world. Humanitarian civic action, HCA, is a key government, US government function, which military practices, and I practice as a civil affairs officer. My teams and I frequently undertook projects to ensure that communities had access to, to pure water as part of the humanitarian civic assistance initiatives in locations such as Lestari, Kosovo, Baka Bay, Iraq, Baghdad, Iraq, Gao Mali, and the Pankizi Valley of Georgia, along the Russian border and places I had operated in. All for the purpose of supporting US government objectives promoting good governance, stability, security, and economic prosperity among our partners and allies. On one deployment, my team and I distributed over one million liters of fresh water to the people of Baka Bay, Iraq, all while under enemy threat and at times under enemy fire. And now I have returned home to Tzusuki to find that my local government neglects clean water for its citizens. Respectfully, how disturbing this is. Culturally, I was, I was raised in the Catholic faith, where the patron saint of Tzusuki Mission Catholic Church, which is part of the Guadalupe Parish, which is right down the street from where we sit, is Sani Sidro, the patron saint of the farmer. My ancestors chose this patron saint, possessing some kind of understanding that we might not have today. Ironically, Jean Baptiste Lamy, Bishop Lamy, the first Archbishop of Santa Fe, New Mexico, the namesake of Bishop's Lodge, which is named after him, found that place for respite and rest in that beautiful community along that pristine river. As we start, as we stand here today, demanding pure water for our community, let us remember that water is not merely a commodity, but a fundamental element of life, a gift from a creator, just as the Psalmist declares. He leads me beside still water. He restores my soul. Pure water is essential for our physical and spiritual well-being. When this vital resource is polluted or denied, it only threatens our health, but also diminishes our ability to thrive and flourish as God intended. My protest echoes the biblical call for justice and stewardship of creation. We are not just fighting for pure water. We are asserting our inherent right to life sustained by this pure and necessary gift, a right that reflects God's care for humanity and his creation.
Would you wrap up, please, Mr. Romero?
Water is essential for life. It contributes to good governance, stability, security, economic prosperity, similar to any other place on earth. Pure water is a just and practical necessity, but also a moral and spiritual imperative. For your citizenry, I ask the state of New Mexico, with all humility, to get this right.
Thank you. Jerry Eckert Queenman? Charles Queenman? Colin Green? All right, that's the end of the first page, so I'll move to the platform and then take the next page. I see Mr. Wurzberger as a hand raised. Mr. Wurzberger, can you unmute yourself?
How am I doing? Hello?
Hello, you're gonna have to speak up. You're very quiet.
Oh, all right. Well, my name is Peter Wurzberger. W U R Z B U R G E R.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll start your time.
Great. I live in one of the homes above the hotel. I've been there for about eighteen years with my family. I support the hotel system. It complies with NMED. It complies with EPA. I'm really exhausted by the complaints of what might be happening and what we might put down the drain when everybody in the Tzusuki Valley has the same kind of drain. They can go into their septic system. They can go into their leach field. They can go into their groundwater. I'm tired of this non-equivalency. I suggest that every Tzusuki homeowner think about the cleanliness and the advanced technology of this system versus the nineteenth-century technology that they're living with and denying a twenty-first-century science and technology-based system. And I would just propose to you all that you follow science and not, you know, give in to nineteenth-century concerns about what might be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wurzberger. Luis, is there anyone else on the platform with a hand raised?
I'm done at this time, madam.
Thank you very much. Dylan Chieflow? If you would spell your first and last name for the record.
D Y L A N C H I E F F A L O.
Thank you. Swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'll start your time.
I speak today not just as a concerned resident, but as someone who deeply loves New Mexico, the land, the people, the fragile ecosystems that ties together. The state is a desert, and that means water is not just a resource, it's a lifeline. Every creek, every aquifer, every drop counts. When we allow treated wastewater to enter sensitive waterways like Little Tzusuke Creek, we gamble with more than pollution. We gamble with the future. The land doesn't have the luxury of dilution like wetter regions do. Contamination here stays in the soil, the roots and the water table. It's not dramatic to say that decisions made here today affect generations. I urge you to consider not just the legality of the permits issued, but the ethical responsibility we all share to protect the living systems that can't speak for themselves. Four pueblo tribes rely on Little Tzusuke Creek for their drinking water, Tzusuke, Nambé, Palake, and San de la Fonzo. Last month, during a town hall meeting at Tzusuke Elementary, a ten-year-old pueblo girl asked, what about me? A reminder that today's decisions will shape her entire lifetime, and her mother spoke earlier and brilliantly. The choice before us is clear. Have the decency to connect the Santa Fe's municipal supply. Juniper has the means to invest in the future of these communities respectfully. Failure to act would only extend a long history of injustice towards native peoples, and that cannot continue in twenty twenty-five. I moved here to work in the film industry. I'm a union member of IOTC, and I'm originally from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, a city that reclaimed its legacy from industry, now boasts cleaner-flowing rivers through every neighborhood. I grew up whitewater kayaking in the Okeagany River. That shaped my respect for water and deepened my understanding for what happens when we don't protect it. Coming to New Mexico, I found a different kind of beauty, scarcer, more delicate, and far more vulnerable. So I'll say to conclude, with all due respect, I'm asking you today as politely as I can, please stop polluting Little Tzusuke Creek and connect Bishop's Lodge to a proper municipal system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chieflow. James Martinez? Hello, if you would spell your first and last name.
My name is James Martinez, J A M E S, M A R T I N, easy.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So basically going to lay out just some fundamental ground rules that we have already established. And if anyone has any objections, go ahead. I'm gonna start with Article Six, Clause Two of the United States Constitution's federal articles. It says, "This Constitution and the laws of the United States, what shall be made in pursuance thereof, and all treaties made or what shall be made under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law of the land, and the judges in every state shall be bound thereby. Anything in the Constitution or laws of any states to the contrary is not withstanding." The supremacy clause means that any permit or state decision that violates federal law or constitutional protections is void. State officials and agencies cannot issue permits that would result in harm or harm to protected water or land without violating the supreme law.
Mr. Martinez, would you slow down a little for the court reporter?
Yes, sorry. New Mexico State Constitution, Article Twenty, Section One, it's the oath of office. "Every person elected or appointed to any office shall before entering upon his duties take and subscribe to an oath or affirmation that he will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of this state, and that he will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of his office to the best of his ability. All New Mexico's officials, including those in the Environmental Department, are legally and morally bound to uphold constitutional protections. Issuing permits that result in the pollution of Tzusuki lands is a direct violation of their oath." Marbury versus Madison, five U.S. one thirty-seven. "Courts have the duty to interpret and enforce the Constitution above statutes. When an action of the state violates constitutional principles, the court must invalidate it." Norton versus Shelby County, one eighteen U.S. four twenty-five. "An unconstitutional act is not law. It confers no rights, imposes no duties, and creates no office. A permit that violates constitutional mandates is void from the start." The New Mexico Constitution's Article Twenty, Section Twenty-one, it's called the Green Amendment. "The protection of this state's beautiful and healthful environment is hereby declared to be of fundamental importance to the public interest, health and safety, and the general welfare. The legislators shall provide for the control of pollution and control of dispolement of the air, water, and other natural resources of the state."
Mr. Martinez, slow down.
Sorry. "Consistent with the use and development of these resources for the maximum benefit of the people. Allowing Bishop's Lodge to continue dumping wastewater contradicts this section. Protecting water is not optional. It is a constitutional obligation. Since the Constitution is intended for the observance of the judiciary, as well as of the departments of government, and the judges are sworn to support its provisions, the courts are not at liberty to overlook or disregard its commands or counter activations thereof. It is their duty in authorized proceedings to give full effect to the existing Constitution and to obey all constitutional provisions irrespective of their opinion as to the wisdom or desirability of such provisions and irrespective of the consequence. Courts should be alert to enforce the provisions of the United States Constitution and guard against their infringement by legislative fiat or otherwise. The duty to declare a law unconstitutional when warranted cannot be declined. The courts must declare that the Constitution and not the statute governs in all cases before them for judgment. Courts are duty-bound to enforce the Constitution and must declare unconstitutional any action that infringes upon public protections regardless of political convenience. Constitutional provisions are mandatory and must be obeyed. The mandate of a constitutional provision operating upon the legislative department is as obligo, Jesus Christ, obligatory, I'm sorry. As the governing, as that governing the courts, the legislator cannot disregard the Constitution to suit its own ideas of expediency or convenience. This language makes it clear, no department, no official, and nor no corporation is above constitutional duties. Any violation is void and must be remedied. An attempt to deny is disparage. The people of Tzusuki and the right, and their right to a clean and healthful environment is a crime. Under Title eighteen, United States Code, Sections two forty-one and two forty-two. Title eighteen, United States Code two forty-one says, "If two or more persons conspire to injure, oppress, or threaten, or intimidate any person in any state, territory, commonwealth, possession, or district, and the free exercise or enjoyment of any right or privilege secured to him by the Constitution or laws of the United States, or because of his having so exercised the same, or if two or more persons go into disguise on the highway or on the premises of another with the intent to prevent or hinder his free exercise or enjoyment of any right or privilege so secured, they shall be fined under this title or in prison not more than ten years or both." Title eighteen, United States Code, Section two forty-two. "Whoever under color of any law, statute, ordinance, regulation, or custom will flee subjects any person in any state, territory, commonwealth, possession, or district to the deprivation of any rights, privileges, or immunities secured or protected by the Constitution or laws of the United States shall be fined under this title or in prison not more than one year or both, and if bodily injury results," which it has, the governor has pointed that out. This guy's got fungi growing out of his yard.
Mr. Martinez, you've, you've reached several minutes.
I'm sorry.
Would you put the rest in writing, perhaps?
Yeah. I already got it written down.
Thank you very much. Claire Libin? If you would, oh, your first and last name, please.
My name is Claire Libin, C L A I R E, last name Libin, L I B I N.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, madam hearing officer. I'm an artist, and I've lived in New Mexico for twenty-seven years. I've been inspired by the beauty of this precious land. I lived in Taos for seventeen years and in Tzusuki for ten on White Balder Lane, near Tzusuki Creek, on Tzusuki Creek. I'm speaking from the heart today, not about technicality, but I'm speaking for the wildlife that can't speak for themselves, that could be deeply affected by water that is polluted. The bears, the coyotes, the raccoons, the deers, the birds. They are innocent beings that could be as harmed as we and our future human life in this beautiful Tzusuki Valley. I have a photograph that I took back in twenty eighteen of a flood at Bishop's Lodge where the horses were illegally kept in a flood zone right along the water. And the, I, I don't know if I can approach the bench with this photograph or I can put, put it in.
Sorry. Yes, you can certainly bring it down.
That, the water that overflowed along the, along the road when I was driving up the road in the big storm in twenty eighteen, the horses were terrified. And I have photographs the following day that can be shown in the future. We don't need an expert to tell us what could happen, when and if this happens again, and the Tzusuki Creek overflows into the current system and continues to poison the, our water and our aquifers. We have eleven hundred signatures and a petition from New Mexico residents objecting to this petition. This is not a frivolous act. We believe in science. We're not here out of some sort of desperate attempt for attention and to go against another point of view. We're here to protect the land and water of Tzusuki. I ask you not to pass this petition and honor the water and land of this beautiful, precious land. And I have to say that hearing the indigenous people speak and the families that have lived here for generations, I am new to New Mexico, but I love it in my heart, and I can only say that whatever we can do as a community for the future generations to keep the water pure is why we're here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Libin. David Dougherty? All right. Thank you very much. Valerie Young?
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Would you spell your first? Would you um spell your first and last name, please?
Yes, my name is Valerie, V.A.L.E.R.I.E. Last name is Pijuan, P.I.J.O.A.N.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Please go ahead.
Yes, um, I've lived in Tusuke for fifty-two years. I'm a parciante of the Aseca del Medio de Tusuke. Um, I have fruit trees for many, many, many years. So I have irrigated vegetable garden from the Aseca. Um, when the Amat case was being settled, I particularly loved hearing, uh, water is life. It is. And we've heard a lot about this. Um, my particular well water is very sweet. It's very good tasting. It's better than this stuff than that. Did you? Um, I wanted to say how precious our water is. I wanted also to say that our um Asecas recharge our aquifers. And uh our particular Aseca um goes back to eighteen thirty-six. Uh, be, oh, eighteen sixty-three, pardon me, before New Mexico was a state. Um. My commitment is to our right to have our water protected. I would like to say that um Tusuke found out about what was going on with Bishop's Lodge, not only the pueblo, but also our community, rather late in the process. So we weren't trying to crash anybody else's um great idea of a state-of-the-art water system uh to be created to treat Bishop's Lodge sewage. Um, what I would like to say is that the, everything that's already been said, the water table sat fifteen feet below. Uh, there, it's not their leach field, their final low dosing dispersment field. Um, I don't support DP seventy-five. Um, and I've been hearing a lot today about the science and how the science supports all this, and we've heard from two different uh fifty-year-standing professionals. What was the science fifty years ago as compared to today? What will the science be in fifteen years from now as compared to today? Where what is being said with this state-of-the-art uh system that Bishop's Lodge has created is safe. Um, we've heard PFAS pharmaceutical residues are uh not being treated for, and um that's okay because no other systems um in northern Santa Fe are doing that. But in perpetuity, in safety, in consideration, that water is in fact a sacred resource. We've heard it from, we just heard it from, you know, generational um residents of Tusuke, we've heard it uh in in the community and also from the pueblos. We need to protect this precious resource, and that's why I'm speaking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Charles Yardman? Jeffrey Rogers? Hello, if you would spell your first and last name, please.
Jeffrey, J.E.F.F.R.E.Y. Rogers, R.O.G.E.R.S.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'll start. Um, this is my first time coming into the seat, this sort of thing. I'm not a professional speaker by any imagination, but I am a homeowner and a uh person in the community. And uh what I've heard today and over the last several months is a lot of hyperbole about what's really required. This is a wastewater permit. This is in a petrochemical factory that's asking to be buried in her backyard or something like that. Um, it's had a permit before, it's carried on with permit, and now opportunity is there to provide outstanding wastewater treatment that frankly, our community hasn't had before. And now is being brought to uh fruition via the homeowners uh of Bishop's Lodge and the Bishop's Lodge itself and their uh their partners. And I find it fascinating, there's been a lot of hyperbole about all this other stuff that has nothing to do with wastewater permit. It's good to hear it all and there's a lot of passion in the room. But the fact is, what they're proposing and have actually built this multimillion-dollar facility meets all the requirements and exceeds them. And it's doing it strictly by the laws of this country and this this area. And there's no other laws out there that are in effect that is violating of some sort. Now, if the laws need to change, I wholeheartedly agree with that, and there's a legislative process to do so. But denying a permit based on state-of-the-art equipment and meeting and exceeding all the requirements of that permit arbitrarily so, it's just not right. It's just not right, and that's how things won't change. If you want something better, which is my mantra is, is do better. If you want something better, you go through the process of changing the rules. But you can't change rules after they've been met and say, nope. You've met the rules, you've got this multi-million dollar facility, it's better than anything else in the community. And the fact is, my my statement is, is why can't the rest of the community do better? Why can't the they bring theirs up to standards that Bishop Lodge had? So basically, I I see them being singled out in an unfair manner. They're being held to a higher standard than anybody else in the community. And by setting this standard, now the rest of the community has an opportunity to catch up and to put their resources, their talents, their treasures into meeting that standard that that Bishop Lodge has created. And I wholly support their their uh their proposal, their equipment they've done and their permit without reservation.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Uh, John Eddie? If you would, chair, spell your first and last name.
Excuse me, yes, my first name is John, last name is Eddie, E.D.D.Y.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do, thank you.
You all start your time.
Uh, it's been an interesting day, and uh I appreciate all the words spoken till now. And I do have a couple of things to say and some observations from my own personal life. I'm a resident of Tusuki. And first off, I live within a a development that is an HOA homeowners association. We were developed with a wastewater treatment plant integrated into our development. We have uh a wetland basin which helps to filter this water, and we treat all of the liquid waste coming through the houses, daisy chained down to this system. We report to an MED a couple of times a year, and we are held to certain restrictions on our permit. Now, uh what I see is a problem here, going back to the county, allowing development of a scale that they have in this area inappropriately set us in motion for where we are today. That's how I see it. I think we have an opportunity here to make some adjustments. I think that uh the lodge has been moving in a right direction, but I think there are some tweaks that can happen here to improve this system. One of those tweaks is to redirect the affluent water away from a direct diversion into the little Tusuki. Pump it back uphill. If necessary, go all the way to the Santa Fe treatment plants. We know that's expensive. Go all the way up the hill and spread that water across treatment plants with wetland systems interspersed throughout the neighborhoods up there and the hills. There are very viable systems that have been proven to work. This keeps this water away from directly impacting our watershed. So I want to pivot to subject that was just brought up. I am the chairman of the Aseca del Medio de Tusuke, which is one of three extent living Asecas left in our valley. I'm past, I think there were at least ten Asecas in the Tusuki Valley. This has atrophied over time because of development and life-changing, lifestyles changing. Tusuki was a breadbasket for Santa Fe as well as Sienega and the outlying villages. Things are different now, but we do use this water directly through deliverance of our Asecas to basically the whole lower half of Tusuki. We take our water from a head gate, which is right in the vicinity, just above the Tusuki School, if you can envision this. Now, the distinction of our Aseca is that we are downstream from the confluence of the Little Tusuki and the Big Tusuki rivers. The other two Asecas, three Asecas, I'm sorry, in the valley are, they get their water from head gates that are above the confluence of these watercourses. So we are the only Aseca that is directly metaphinetic, if you will, from the water of the real Tusuki. My problem as the commissioner of this Aseca, it's my responsibility to deliver pure, clean water to the parciantes of my valley. I take it very seriously. It's water that I use to grow fruit trees on my property, sometimes vegetables, in hopes that my property and the property of my neighbors can be further developed for growing food, because I'd like to see us get back to that in the valley. So, um, what happens and what is the timeline here? When all of a sudden there is a breakdown in this system, or finally the testing that the lodge is doing brings to fact that there are contaminants that have been going into our watershed? What happens then? If my Aseca is running at that time, I have no recourse but to shut down my Aseca. Now, that's a pretty obvious problem because I am legally charged with delivering that water. It's my responsibility. I shut down my Aseca. The next step is, okay, they'll shut down their plant. The damage is done. The water was done to my Aseca. I shut it down. Water continues to my neighbors at the pueblo. Same thing is going to happen with them and on down through to San Aldefonso. So, there's my problem, and I'll try to keep it short because I know a lot of people have already covered a lot of the bases, and I really appreciate this opportunity to speak.
Please wrap up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, that is the end of the names um that were on the sheets of paper. Uh, is there anyone uh remaining who would like to offer public comment at this time who's not already provided comment? Uh, please just raise your hand, come on up. This is not the final opportunity to offer public comment. If you would state and spell your names.
My name is Vince Hanamiel, V.I.N.C.E., J.A.R.A., M.I.L.L.O.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'll start your time.
Again, my name is Vince Hanamiel, and I'm a proud and longtime resident of the bu- the beautiful Tusuki Village. I'm proud to say I'm raising my ten-year-old daughter in Tusuke, and here's where we'll stay. I'm here today because I'm concerned about our most precious natural resource, water. Not just water, but clean water. In July of twenty twenty-one, Bishop's Lodge Resort reopened after a seventy-five million dollar remodel. Since then and prior to that, they have either refused or ignored their septic system failure repairs. I hear about the state-of-the-art water treatment facility, the, excuse me. I hear about the state-of-the-art water treatment facility that they have now installed. My question is why it wasn't installed then? Reminder, a seventy-five million dollar remodel. Perhaps he found it easier to dump their waste into Tusuka Creek, hoping hundreds of residents wouldn't mind. Well, we do. We are here and we're not going away. When the current owners of Bishop's Lodge sell was called a luxurious property and return to their respective state in which they reside with a substantial profit, who will be living in fear of one failure of their system, which is inevitable? The residents of Tusuki Village and everyone downstream, including Pueblo Lands, these residents should not be part, should not be put at risk due to the lack of responsibility of a multimillion-dollar resort. Please save our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanamiel. Is there anyone else in the room would like to offer comment? Again, this is not the last opportunity. Luis, is there anyone online?
Not at this time, Madam Hearing Officer.
All right, we're going to return to the technical case then. Uh, let's see, we uh go to the Bureau now, Ms. Weatherly. Yes, certainly sit on the dais. You will all have to pull the microphones uh close to you. Thank you. And we'll take you one at a time. Mr. Herman, will you start? By spelling your first and last name.
My name is Jason Herman, J.A.S.O.N.H.E.R.M.A.N.
Ms. Young?
Avery Young, A.V.E.R.Y.Y.O.U.N.G.
Deborah Carpenter, D.E.B.O.R.A.H.C.A.R.P.E.N.T.E.R.
All right, and do you and each of you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
I do.
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Weatherly.
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer. Um, Mr. Herman, can you please state your name and occupation?
Jason Herman, I am the Pollution Prevention Section Program Manager in the Groundwater Quality Bureau at the New Mexico Environment Department.
Can you please describe your duties as the Pollution Prevention Section Program Manager?
As the Program Manager, I oversee the permitting actions under twenty-point-six-point-two NMAC. I have four teams that I supervise. The Small System Domestic Waste Team, the Large System Domestic Waste Team, the Reuse Team, and the Industrial Team, and I ensure that permits are issued in a regulatory compliance manner and that the regulations are evenly applied across the entire state of New Mexico.
Thank you. Did you um prefile a written testimony as NMD Exhibit One? Did you uh prefile a written testimony as NMDD Exhibit 1 and resume as NMDD Exhibit 2?
Yes.
And are there any corrections you would like to make to your testimony?
No.
Do you adopt that written testimony here today?
I do.
Can you please summarize your testimony, beginning with a summary of the Water Quality Act?
Sure. In New Mexico, we have uh water protection laws called specifically identified as the Water Quality Act. That it identifies the duties of department as well as it creates the Water Quality Control Commission, uh, which oversees water quality standards and protections in the state of New Mexico. The Water Quality Act includes uh protections for surface and subsurface waters and also empowers the WQCC to assign responsibilities for administering those regulations to different departments in the state. The Bureau specifically issues groundwater discharge permits under the Water Quality Act, specifically under the Ground and Surface Water Protection Regulations 20.6.2. The Bureau's Pollution Prevention Section implements those provisions of the regulations as they apply to domestic, industrial, and different types of discharges that may adversely impact groundwater.
Can you please discuss the basis for the requirement of a discharge permit at Bishop's Lodge?
There are four reasons why the Bishop's Lodge facility requires a discharge permit. First, they are discharging effluent in a manner that may move directly or indirectly into groundwater as defined in the regulations. The discharge uh may move into groundwater and has a total dissolved solids concentration of less than 10,000 milligrams per liter. And the discharge is into a place of withdrawal for potential future use as agricultural or domestic waste uh water supply. And the applicant is discharging effluent that is not subject to any of the exemptions in 3105, which is the exemption regulations.
Can you please discuss the components of a discharge permit?
Sure. Our discharge permits include an introductory section, which identifies the facility as well as any of the parameters in the regulations that are required to be identified. Then it has an operational section, which includes the conditions under which a facility must operate. It has a monitoring section, which identifies the monitoring requirements for all of the different components and discharges associated with the facility. And then there's a contingency plan section, which requires uh the lodge to do certain things in the event of a failure of the system. And then we also have a closure section, which identifies the parameters that must be met in order to consider the facility to be closed. And then the last section is our general terms and conditions, which includes our right of entry and access inspection and also identifies the fines associated with violations of Water Quality Act and the permit itself.
Thank you. Can you please summarize the general permitting process?
Sure. Uh, in the case of Bishop's Lodge, we received an application for renewal modification. We identified the interested parties list associated with that facility and began the first public notice process after deeming the facility's application to be administratively complete. Uh, for a facility to be administratively complete, it's a very low bar. It's just basic information, but we did receive a almost complete application uh in this instance. And so, once we did our first public notice, which announces to the world that we have received an application, uh, we begin drafting the permit itself and we work the facility, we perform inspections. We uh ask questions and what we call requests for additional information. And once we have completed our technical investigation of the facility, we then deem it technically complete, draft the full permit, which then goes to a second public notice process with, which includes a 30-day comment period and opportunity for a request for hearing. And in this instance, there was a request for hearing and that is why we are here.
My next question is going to be, uh, if you could discuss the public participation process in general, but is there anything else you would like to add about that?
Uh, I think no, that's it.
Okay. Is there anything else you would like to add to your testimony?
No.
Uh, Madam Hearing Officer, I'd like to move to admit uh NMDD Exhibits 1 and 2.
Objections?
No objection.
Thank you, they're admitted.
Ms. Young? So, may I move on to Ms. Young?
Yes.
Okay. Um, can you please state your name and occupation?
Avery Young, I'm the Large System Domestic Waste Team Lead of the Pollution Prevention Section of the Groundwater Quality Bureau of the New Mexico Environment Department.
Can you please describe your duties as the Large System Domestic Waste Team Lead?
The Pollution Prevention Section currently has about 450 discharge permits, of which 100 would fall into the category of large systems. Uh, we categorize that as systems discharging 50,000 gallons or more per day. Uh, I oversee and manage those discharge permits as well as a case of 35 discharge permits um that I am considered the technical reviewer for as well.
Did you prefile a written testimony as NMDD Exhibit 3 and resume as NMDD Exhibit 4?
Yes.
And are there any corrections you would like to make to your testimony?
Yes, one correction.
What is, what is, what is that correction?
On page 18, line 4, I incorrectly stated that this uh facility would require a wastewater level 4 operator. In fact, it requires a wastewater 3 operator.
Are there any other corrections you would like to make?
No.
Do you adopt your written testimony here today with that correction?
Yes.
Can you please provide a summary of your testimony, beginning with a description of the facility and the site?
Yes, Bishop's Lodge um is a uh resort as well as the wastewater treatment plant also has homes and condominiums connected above it. It is located within uh Tesuke, New Mexico, just north of Santa Fe. Um, the groundwater quality has a pre-discharge total dissolved solids concentration of 300 milligrams per liter. Um, and there's some general hydrogeology and soil conditions in my written testimony.
Can you please summarize the history of, of DP 75?
NMDD records indicate that the facility has operated the wastewater treatment uh plant prior to the Water Quality Control Commission's promulgation of the Ground and Surface Water Protection Regulations. In May, uh, 1979, a consultant for Bishop's Lodge submitted a revised notice of intent to discharge and a discharge plan on behalf of the applicant. Uh, in July of that year, NMDD issued the first discharge plan approval to Bishop's Lodge, um, authorizing up to 30,000 gallons per day using an extended aeration package plant with a treatment. Extended air aeration package plant with treated effluent discharging to irrigation fields via spray irrigation. Uh, the discharge permit or plan, as it was called at the time, has been renewed and modified seven times um since then.
Can you please discuss the development of DP 75? Of draft DP 75, including any modifications to the draft permit?
In April of 2024, the Groundwater Quality Bureau received an application from Gary Lee of Lee &amp; Company LLC on behalf of the applicant. Uh, we did determine that application to be administratively complete um for 20.6.2.3108 NMAC. Uh, we sent the applicant, sent the facility a administrative completeness determination and um which required public notice. Uh, they had to hang a sign, they had to uh mail out flyers, they had to post something in the newspaper. Um, that is that first public notice uh that Jason already referred to. Uh, following that, we did receive proof that they had completed that public notice process. Uh, and NMDD published our, our um our own public notice that we had received that application uh and that it was for review. Uh, we conducted a site inspection in July 2024. In September 2024, September 2nd, we received a revised application, which included uh the addition of a low-pressure dose disposal field as an authorized discharge location and method. And in uh fall, later that month, September 16th, 2024, uh NMDD published the draft discharge permit and uh we published our second public notice. Um, the application that was received was a renewal and modification. The modification was to increase or improve the water quality to increase the discharge volume from 14,000 and change gallons per day up to 30,000 gallons per day as well as eh to authorize the discharge of Class 1A reclaimed domestic wastewater for uh irrigation on the property.
Did you prefile the draft DP 75 as NMDD Exhibit 7?
Yes.
Did NMDD receive any public comments on the draft permit?
Yes, NMDD received 146 comments during the public notice process that occurred, oh, that began in September 2024, uh and 80 requests for a public hearing during that time.
Were there any revisions made to the draft permit following public comment?
Yes, there were several, several recommended revisions to the draft that um we have included.
did NMDD receive any comments on the draft permit from the applicant?
Yes, we received comments from Glorio Geoscience on behalf of the applicant.
And were there any revisions made to the draft permit following those comments?
No.
Did you prefile the revised draft discharge permit as NMDD Exhibit 8?
Yes.
Is there anything else you would like to add to your testimony?
No.
Madam Hearing Officer, I request um to admit Exhibits 3, 4, 7, and 8?
Thank you. 3, 4, 7, and 8 are admitted.
Uh, Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you please state your name and occupation?
Yes, my name is Deborah Carpenter and I am a Water Resource Professional 3.
Can you please describe your duties as the Water Resource Professional in the Pollution Prevention Section?
Yes, I have approximately 20 uh facilities in my inventory. Uh, they range from very simple septic tank and subsurface disposal to more complicated, to more complicated systems that have several parts to their treatment trains and disposal.
Did you file a written testimony as NMDD Exhibit 5 and resume as NMDD Exhibit 6?
Yes.
Are there any corrections you would like to make to your testimony?
No.
Do you adopt that written testimony here today?
I do.
Can you please provide a summary of your written testimony, beginning with disposal field design principles?
Uh, yes, when you're looking at subsurface disposal, there's several physical characteristics that need to be accounted for. Soil permeability, uh, where potable or non-potable water sources are located in relationship to that disposal area, um setback distances to limiting layers or um man-made or physical features. Um, the influent characterization, meaning what do you expect to be in the influent? Um, that needs, that could possibly affect the disposal area. And then another consideration is the effluent quality, because that will determine um many of the, the industry acceptable setback distances. Um, the other thing I looked at um for the disposal area design was it's very, very limited use. It is an adjunct to the, to the uh irrigation system.
Um, can you please discuss Bishop's Lodge's wastewater treatment facility disposal field design?
Uh, yes, it, it does have highly permeable soils, which uh means that the water is going to move rapidly through that interface. Um, as a consequence of that, um, the effluent quality is very, very high. So the rapid movement is not a concern because we're not relying on that soil interface for any part of the treatment of that effluent.
Is there anything else you would like to add to your testimony?
No, ma'am.
Madam Hearing Officer, I move to admit Exhibits 5 and NMDD Exhibit 6.
Objections?
No objection.
Thank you, Exhibits 5 and 6 are admitted.
Can you stand up across?
Okay. Uh, Ms. Mulcahy, do you have questions of the Bureau panel?
Yes, thank you. Um, I do have some general questions and then some particular questions, but do feel free, if I have a question for Ms. Young, Mr. Herman, Ms. Carpenter, do feel free as well to jump in if it's an area of your testimony. Um, the first thing I actually um want to ask you about, Ms. Young, this was in your testimony. We've heard um a lot about all of the quote-unquote downstream wells to stay, today. But if you have a downstream well, you also have a septic system, is that correct?
I don't believe that was in my testimony. Um, okay, uh, Ms. Carpenter, do you know?
In general, if you have a private onsite drinking water well for potable use, most likely you have your own onsite septic system.
Thank you. And I apologize for saying that was in Ms. Young's testimony when it was in. Um, and let me ask you, and this is to the panel. Would discharges from a septic system be considered Class 1A reuse water?
No.
And um does the Bishop's Lodge wastewater treatment plant discharge for direct drinking water consumption?
No.
Um, and on page 8 of your testimony, Ms. Young, you explain that Bishop's Lodge has upgraded their system from an activated sludge mechanical treatment plant, is that correct?
Yes.
And um in your testimony, you concluded that the Bishop's Lodge current MBR wastewater treatment plant is better than the one that was in place before. Is that correct?
Yes.
And do you still believe that here today?
Yes.
And is the discharge that Bishop's Lodge has now with the MBR treatment plant a better quality effluent than it previously had?
Yes.
Um, and let me ask you, since we talked about some of the um older permits that Bishop's Lodge has had in place, did anyone challenge any of those previous permits, to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge.
And in fact, since 1979, this permit has never been challenged, correct?
Correct.
Um, also on pages 12 and 13 of your testimony, um, you talk about, you comment on, you respond to a comment that asked why TKN nitrate, PDS, and chloride are the only four constituents that will be sampled in the monitoring wells, correct?
Yes.
Could you explain that comment and your response?
Sure, the comment was, why are these, are, why are these the only four constituents that will be sampled for in the wells as well as the sampling port at the wastewater treatment plant? And port, yes. Wastewater treatment plant? And how are these four selected? TKN or Total Kaldol Nitrogen, Nitrate Total Dissolved Solids, or TDS, and Chloride are the general indicator constituents for domestic waste. NMED requires the permittee to sample for those four constituents in the sorry. I thought I was doing good. Okay. In the beginning, TKN or Total Kaldol Nitrogen, Nitrate Total Dissolved Solids, and Chloride are the general indicator constituents for domestic waste. NMED requires the permittee to sample for those four constituents in the treated wastewater to assess the efficacy of the treatment system. NMED also requires the permittee sample for those four constituents in the monitoring wells to assess the efficacy of the disposal system. Those four constituents have been determined based on extensive scientific literature in studies to be in domestic water at, in known quantities. And therefore, they are the constituents that are used to determine the treatment efficacy, because we can track it throughout the system.
Thank you. And I heard you say that those four constituents are based on extensive scientific studies of what is in domestic wastewater. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so it's not just based on a belief of NMED, is it?
Correct.
And let me ask you, and I want to open this up to the panel, so please do feel free to comment on this as well. Is Bishop's Lodge discharging sewage into Little Tusuki Creek?
No, not to my knowledge.
Do you have any reason to believe that it is?
No.
Let me ask another question to you while we're talking about the treatment process. Is the low-dose disposal area a leach field?
Actually, leach field is not defined in any of our regulations. It's, it's a very old term for when we just wanted water to go away. Low-pressure dosing actually refers to a specifically built disposal area that uses low-pressure piping to deliver and spread out the entire effluent over the entirety of the disposal area.
So, Ms. Carpenter, is Bishop's Lodge discharging the effluent to the low-dose disposal field for any kind of treatment?
No.
Would it be fair to say that the effluent is fully treated before discharged to the low-dose disposal area?
Yes.
Is there any groundwater discharge permit in New Mexico that treats only domestic wastewater that requires a permittee to sample for every single contaminant in 3103?
No.
Does NMED have standards for pharmaceuticals?
No.
Does NMED have standards for PFAS?
We have three PFAS included in our toxic pollutants list, which does not come with a numerical standard. It is a narrative standard. And that's the only place that they exist in our regulations.
Has Bishop's Lodge ever tested for PFAS?
Yes, bless you. Bless you.
And Ms. Avery, what were the results of the Bishop's Lodge test for PFAS?
Can I open it?
Yeah.
Please do. It's in the administrative record. I just don't want to misquote. I do believe that they were non-detect for the three PFAS constituents we have listed in our toxic pollutants list, but I would like to double-check that.
Please do.
Yes, all three that we have listed as a toxic pollutant came back non-detect in the influent. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, that's groundwater. I'm gonna check. That is correct for the influent as well.
And when you say non-detect, what do you mean by that, Ms. Avery?
The results were non-detect. So the reporting limit for those three are set at a specific amount. That's the lowest that the equipment is able to detect. Therefore, if there were any, it would be below what is able, that, that equipment is able to detect within that sample.
But that would be true for any water or wastewater, is that correct? Not specific to Bishop's Lodge?
That's correct.
Bishop's Lodge?
It's more specific to the lab, the sampling methodology and things like that, which determine the reporting limit and how sensitive that equipment is to the constituents that it's sampling or analyzing for.
And this was a standard PFAS sample, correct?
To my knowledge, yes.
Thank you. And I have here, I'm going to, if I may, Madam Hearing Officer, approach the witnesses, and I have sample, I have copies for Ms. Weatherly and Mr. Nasco as well. And I have marked what is going to be Exhibit 2, and this is in the administrative record as well already, at 01388. It was in page 29 of our application. And it's marked as E, as an elephant, 2.
All right, thank you.
And I just handed to the witnesses what has been marked as Exhibit E, as an elephant, 2. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And this is an analytical result dated 6/26/2023. Is that correct?
Yes.
And it identifies the sample as final effluent from Bishop's Lodge. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you've seen this before, haven't you?
Yes.
Okay. And this analysis was done for a number of metals, is that correct?
Yes, sixteen, I believe.
That's correct, sixteen, exactly. I don't want to read every one of these metals, but these would be metals that are regulated in 3103, is that correct?
Yes, they're all have numerical standards under 3103.
Okay. And I have up here, Ms. Young, I have 3103 up here. And I'm looking at the copper standard, for example, under 3103, which reads one milligram per liter. What is the result for copper in this analytical?
0.032 milligrams per liter.
And so would the Bishop's Lodge effluent meet the copper standard?
Yes, it is well below the standard.
Okay. Let's move down the page if you don't mind. I'm looking now at the aluminum standard. And in 3103, I see that that standard is five milligrams per liter. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And what is the result here on E2 for aluminum?
0.12 milligrams per liter.
And so would that meet the standard?
Yes, it is well below the standard.
Okay. Let's just go one more on this page. Let's go down to cobalt, for example. I'm looking at 3103, and the cobalt, cobalt standard is 0.05 milligrams per liter. What was the result for cobalt on the analytical?
0.007 milligrams per liter.
And so would that meet the standard?
Yes.
Okay, and there's a number. Let me just count them up. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. In fact, there's ten of these, ten of the sixteen heavy metals were completely non-detect. Is that correct?
Yes, they were below the reporting limit.
And so would that meet the New Mexico water quality standards?
For these six constituents, yes.
Okay. And you said six, but
Sorry, sixteen.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. No problem. And these constituents that I have here, these heavy metals, are they usually associated with systems that treat only domestic wastewater?
No.
And also, I now have here, what's also already in the administrative record, that has been, oh, excuse me, let me go ahead and move to admit as cross-examination Exhibit E2 into the record.
Objections? E2 is admitted.
I also have another exhibit which has been marked as E1, and if I may approach, Madam Hearing Officer?
Yes.
If I could let the record reflect that I just handed to the witnesses what's been marked as Exhibit E, as an elephant, 1?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's, yes, please take this side. No problem. When I just handed you was marked Exhibit E1, is another analytical report. Is that correct?
This looks like a summary potentially, but I wouldn't say this is an analytical report from a lab.
Okay. And in this analytical report, there are, excuse me, strike that. This, this is dated 7/26/2023. Is that correct?
Yes.
And it says at the top, Bishop's Lodge wastewater treatment effluent. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And this document also lists sixteen heavy metals. Is that correct?
Yes.
And those sixteen heavy metals are also constituents regulated in 3103, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it also lists an analytical result for cyanide. Is that correct?
Yes.
And heptachlor? I may not be saying that correctly. Heptachlor?
Yeah, but it's not in a, or what is the question?
And it also lists
It does list heptachlor.
Okay, and then the last one is chlorine. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And if you go to the third page, or excuse me, it's, it says page four, but it's the third page in the document that I've handed you. You'll see there's a red X on that page, correct?
Yes.
And it says detected, the red X indicates detected above the MCL or recommended level. Is that correct?
Yes.
So were any of these constituents that I've handed you on E1 detected above the MCL?
For this summary, it does not indicate any are above the MCL.
And we're, we already test, you already testified that these are all regulated in 3103, is that correct?
Vanadium, I don't believe actually is a 3103 standard. I would have to check if it's a toxic pollutant.
Okay, but you would agree that there's, most of these other ones, would it be fair to say are regulated under 3103?
So, if I could jump in
Yeah, please do.
I believe that this analysis was originally intended to be used for an anti-degradation process under the Service Water Quality Bureau, which would be EPA requirements as well as standards at the EPA levels. There's, there is overlap, there's considerable overlap, just not everything. And so things like vanadium, heptachlor, chlorine are going to be things that we don't have groundwater standards for, that they analyzed for in order to do that anti-degradation analysis.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Herman. That's very helpful. So then, given that, would it, this morning, you heard Mr. Nasco say that we just can't possibly know what's in this effluent, and there's no way to tell because no testing has been done. Would that be accurate?
No.
Ms. Mulcahy, we're going to need an afternoon break here coming up soon. If you would just identify a good stopping time. You don't have to stop right this moment.
We could, I, if I may continue, I don't have that much longer, but we could stop right now if that's your preference, Madam Hearing Officer.
Yeah, I don't like to go too much longer than a hundred minutes at a time. So let's break for fifteen minutes, and please ignore that clock. Come back at 2:55. Just take your seats or your conversations into the hallway. When we broke, Ms. Mulcahy was questioning the Bureau panel. Ms. Mulcahy?
Thank you. So, let me ask you. I believe this is probably most closely aligned with your testimony, Ms. Carpenter. Do septic tank owners sample, monitor, and report on the quality of the discharge from their septic tanks to the NMED?
Not if they have primary treatment, which is ninety percent of the permits in the inventory. The only septic systems that would be required to sample would be what are called alternative treatment units. Alternative treatment units, and it will be shortened to ATUs if we continue to use the term.
Okay. And are you aware, are there any ATUs in the Tusuki Valley downstream of Bishop's Lodge?
If the properties were less than three-quarters of an acre, they will have some type of alternative treatment system.
But you said the vast majority, and I think you even said ninety percent are not an ATU. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
And so ninety percent of those septic tanks would not be sampling and monitoring and reporting on the quality of their discharge to the NMED. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Do septic tanks treat PFAS, Ms. Carpenter?
No.
Do septic tanks treat pharmaceuticals?
No.
Do septic tanks treat medical waste?
No.
Do septic tanks treat hazardous materials, as Mr. Nasco has called them?
No.
I'm not sure who's most appropriate to answer this question. Perhaps it's all of you. Groundwater is more affected by the aggregate of hundreds of septic tanks in an area like Tusuki Valley than it would be by the aggregated wastewater discharge by, by Bishop's Lodge. Isn't that correct?
Yes, septic tanks are the leading cause of contamination in New Mexico.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Ms. Mulcahy. Mr. Nasco? Thank you, Ms. Mulcahy, Mr. Nasko. You consider at the end of the day, so if you'd like, Ms. Weatherly.
There we go, good afternoon, Mr. Herman, Ms. Young, and Ms. Carpenter. I want to start out, if you may, by talking about your general authority under the ground and surface water protection regulations to make sure that you're protecting all groundwater in the state with a TDS less than ten thousand parts per million. And with that policy directive, when you're, when you're analyzing a discharge permit application, is it important to characterize the effluent and know what's going to come out of that discharge?
Oftentimes, we are dealing with either hypothetical or unbuilt systems, and so we rely upon either engineering reports, studies, scientific reports, textbooks, or actual on-the-ground effluent qualities, results from similar type systems, or if the system has been built, then yes, the system itself.
That, that makes sense, but, but also, you, you kind of want to know what activities the discharges engaged in, wouldn't you? When you're analyzing a permit application?
Yes, they're, they're supposed to notify us in the application of the expected quality of the effluent as well as the expected effluent quality.
Yeah, and you know, we've heard a lot of discussion today from the lot, from the resort that this is just domestic wastewater. But isn't it true that the resort really isn't similarly situated to someone who just discharges wastewater from under liquid waste regulations or something like that, because their activities are much different. Isn't that true?
I would not agree with that.
All right, well, let's go back and let's look at it. You, you know, the, the resort does far more than simply discharge waste from toilets and showers. Did you ever investigate the type of activities that the resort is engaged in?
Yes, we looked at the operational practices of the facility.
Right, and they do, they have, for instance, machinery, right, they clean machinery, they service machinery, they have horses, they have equipment, they have, I don't know, a thousand room nights, I don't know how they do that, they have a restaurant, they care for a large piece of property with fertilization. So a lot of activities going on there that a resident downstream in Tusuki who complies with the liquid waste regulations and all the engineering requirements, they don't engage in those activities. Isn't that correct?
Although someone could engage in activities on a facility does not mean that it is part of the wastewater system. There would have to be a drain, a floor drain typically in the facility in which the proposed activities that you're discussing would be similarly in a, someone's residence, they could have a drain in their garage, et cetera, a sink in their garage, things like that, so we did look at the operational sort of operational business of the facility and found that it was characteristic of domestic waste.
So when you looked at the operational characteristics of the facility and in, in the cleaning of, say, machinery, the servicing of machinery, did you try to satisfy yourself that there is no way that was going to enter the waste stream?
Objection, the question was asked and answered about the characterization of the the business activities of the facility.
I just want to know the answer to the question, did you, did you take measures to satisfy yourself that any of these wastes would not enter into the waste stream? I mean, obviously, we just got showed, well, first, if you can answer that question, you can object, it's not your witness, she cannot object.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nasko. Ms. Mulcahy, I will address the objections raised here by Ms. Weatherly. Ms. Weatherly, I think he was trying to close the door, if you will, on the question of what Ms. Young had done to understand what discharge, not discharges inputs there were to the, to the treatment system, is that what you were doing, Mr. Nasko?
Yes, I could rephrase the question if it's helpful.
Go ahead.
And I, Ms. Young, if you want to build this, you're certainly welcome. Did you, did you take steps to satisfy yourself that there was no way that these, these these wastes from other activities would enter into the waste stream, so we'd be beyond testing for nitrates, chlorides, and TDS?
So there's a portion of the application that the applicant is required to fill out to tell us all of the inputs into the system. If you misrepresent or lie on an application, it is a felony, and so we do take them at the word that they are filling out the application appropriately.
All right, that's fair enough, you just say you basically, if the applicant tells you that the, for instance, let's just, let's just back up, because you're knowledgeable of three-one-oh-three standards. We've been, we've been handed these two-year-old reports on metals. I'm shocked that metals are even in the system. I'm not concerned about metals, yet we have two years old and we know that the effluent has metals. Now, on any given Tuesday, they didn't exceed the three-one-oh-three standards for in-situation groundwater contamination, but we wouldn't expect that, you wouldn't expect that to occur, would you?
Excuse me, I, I am gonna object here, I have no problem with Mr. Nasko asking witnesses questions. He is testifying here, which is totally inappropriate. If he has questions about any of the evidence, he is more than able to ask questions about it, but he is testifying.
That's, that's for Ms. Weatherly to raise, not for the lawyer for the lodge.
Okay, and Ms. Mulcahy, as you, as you yourself said earlier, the factual statements made by Mr. Nasko, I'm not accepting as evidence. I'm thinking it's part of the setup of his question.
Yeah, it's cross-examination, I mean, I, maybe you're unfamiliar with it, that's not worth.
Mr. Nasko, please watch your tone. Now, the pending question. Was there a question at the end of your statement?
Yes, so there was a question at the end of my statement, so I, I asked her if you were surprised if metals were in the eff, in this effluent in a test two years ago.
Not necessarily, metals are naturally occurring in groundwater, the source of the drinking water at the facility is groundwater. Most of these, and these concentrations would most likely be existing conditions of that area.
Fair enough, but one thing we did learn from this, did we not, is that the, the, the effluent or the system wasn't removing these, these metals entirely, was it not?
I can't verify that, this system, this results came from a system that's not in place at the facility now.
All right, but let's, let's pivot a little bit to the three-one-oh-three standards, and, and there's been some suggestion, which we've never made, but there's been a suggestion that, that's, that, that someone has requested that all the three-one-oh-three standards be analyzed. Have you heard that today?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not either, because what, what, wouldn't it be appropriate to analyze the three-one-oh-three standards and look for particular constituents that are likely sources of discharge at this facility?
Generally, that's our approach, yes.
Okay, so in this instance, if we did, if we had machinery, we had things like that, I mean, obviously, you'd want to look for solvents, not metals, correct?
Metals would be considered as part of solids?
Solvents.
Solvents, oh.
Cleaning materials, things of that nature.
Machinery is generally made of metals, so when we are looking at machinery like car washes, we look at metals as well.
Certainly, but, but we know, and I'm certainly, you guys know this in your in the work you do for the Environment Department, that you know, some of the biggest problems we've had with groundwater have been degradation project products from perk like TC and PC, which are very low, like five parts per billion, those standards, correct?
Yes, but that's not, you know, I didn't testify to that, and that's not something that we generally look at in our section within groundwater, that's usually dealt with by the remediation section.
Correct, but you, but here, if you found a a source, a potential source of a particular contaminant, wouldn't you review the three-one-oh-three standards and say, yes, this is appropriate for us to analyze to ensure that we're protecting groundwater from degradation?
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, so, I, I think, I'm, I'm gonna go back to, because I think Mr. Herman mentioned that there is a, there's a request for additional information that one would, that the department can do, and that you can ask the applicant what type of activities they're engaging in, and that might give you some idea of what you ought to be testing for, right?
Correct.
So if you do have a machinery shop, or you're doing fertilization, or you're doing medical waste, or medical treatments on animals, that might guide you or instruct you as to what contaminants ought to be tested for periodically in this permit, in this proposed permit.
Sure.
But yeah, in this permit, we don't have any, that all we have are the three, the nitrates, chlorides, total dissolved solids, correct?
Yes, but as I stated before, there'd have to be a connection between those proposed activities and the wastewater treatment system and collection system, and that was not determined to be the case here.
And that wasn't determined because the applicant said it just wasn't happening, right?
Yes.
So let me ask you this on existing conditions, now, we, we I mean, I've heard anecdotally that the, the resort has had two disposal fields that have failed, is that true?
Yes.
All right, and this one is approximate.
I'm sorry, one, you can.
Go ahead, clarify, go ahead.
There's a total of three disposal fields that have existed on the facility. One of them failed on, that was connected to the old system. There is a much older system that they have shut off and voluntarily no longer discharged to, that did not fail.
Okay.
And, and the third one would be the one that they're currently utilizing as their disposal field.
So with respect to the one that failed, has there ever been any analysis of the groundwater conditions beneath that disposal field?
Yes, there's a monitoring well down gradient of that disposal field.
Directly underneath the disposal field, any, have we, have you done any characterization of what the current groundwater conditions are underneath that failed field?
That's hard to answer, groundwater moves, and so current wind is an important factor, so generally, we situate them down gradient of the disposal field and with the intention of monitoring the discharge.
Now, with respect to your, you know, your, your charge to protect groundwater from degradation when issuing a discharge permit, do you, do you have the ability to specify the location of a disposal field?
No, the applicant generally proposes it to us, we evaluate it and we approve based on the regularly, if it meets the regulations in the Water Quality Act.
And if you, well, the Water Quality Act and the, the ground and surface water protection regulations don't specify locations for disposal fields, do they?
No, they do not, we evaluate the location and the installation methodologies in order to determine if those were to be utilized, that they would then be in compliance and result in a discharge that was in compliance with the Water Quality Act and the regulations.
So you do have authority under your general permitting abilities to say yes or no to a particular applicant's proposed location for a disposal field?
Generally, we take the approach of identifying, monitoring, and operational requirements that would then suffice the regulations. So, any proposal that comes to us, our charge is to come up with a permit that we issue that would result in compliance with the groundwater standards and the regulations.
Without regard to the, the site of that particular disposal field?
We have not come across an instance yet where we have been unable to fulfill our requirements.
May I approach the witnesses?
Yes.
We had you with. Mr. Herman, this is for you. I think this is an email from you to Chris Kaplan, is it not?
It is.
It is February seven, twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
And Mr. Kaplan, I assume is with, is employed by the applicant?
I'm not, I'm not sure of his status, but he is one of our points of contact that we.
Got it, all right, fair enough, so this email addresses the when I, what, what, their ability, Bishop's Lodge's ability to continue to discharge without a permit, right?
No. This identifies the regulatory authority and the clarification that their discharge into that leach, into the disposal field is covered under the existing administratively continued permit.
Is that what you would kind of call it?
Administratively continued permit.
And, and when a permit is administratively continued because there's been an application for a renewal submitted, would you kind of refer to that as a permit shield? Is that an accurate term? When you get to continue operating under the permit, right?
Yeah, the, the permit that they were operating under, when it expired, continues to be effective.
And this, your email confirms that the resort can discharge into the new leach field. Right, so they're doing that currently, right?
Correct.
And that new leach field has never been permitted, but they're authorized to do so because of submitting the application. Is that correct?
The permit does not specify the location and it does not identify the specifics of the disposal field. On purpose, we have multiple instances where permits do have a failed system of some sort and have no option but to immediately respond with some sort of replacement, and so if we were to be, be required to go through a modification process, an eight-to-ten-month process, they're effectively asking their residents to stop flushing their toilets or taking showers in order to comply.
And, and so, do I understand correctly that the, this approval to discharge into this disposal field, the department has no interest whatsoever in where that's located?
That is incorrect.
Well, you, you said, you mentioned in your email that the discharge in the new leach field is covered by this authorization and is not a violation. And, and I think your, your basis is, you say, quote, this authorization does not specify the location, construction, or placement of the leach fields, end quote, I read that right?
Yes.
And so they can put it wherever they want, as far as you're concerned.
No. That is incorrect.
Now, take a peek at, if you, do you see the model I put up here, can you look at that by any chance, or is it hard for you to see?
I am able to see it, I have fairly good vision.
Can you see the location of the leach field in relation to the little Tusuki Creek and the downstream wells? You can get up and take a peek and walk around if you want.
Am I just, I'm not asking the questions here. There is an orange dot that is in close proximity to a stream bed and a white dot.
Orange dot. Picking the location of the leach field, did that cause you any concern, given the, the proximity to the stream bed and the downstream water wells?
This representation has no scale, it does not identify the latitude, longitude, it does not identify the elevations nor the proximity, the measurements, or any other information that I would use to make that evaluation.
All right, fair enough. I'll give you that, there is no longitude and latitude on that particular three-D model. But let me ask you, did you, did you, when you, before you wrote that email to Mr. Kaplan, authorizing him to basically discharge of any location he wanted on the property, did you, did you look at this proposed location and determine that it satisfied protections for public health and the environment?
Yes, this location was part of a previous proposal by Bishop's Lodge. So that evaluation, it had already been completed years before that.
You were satisfied with the location. And the proximity of that location to the creek. And the downstream wells was okay.
At the time of the application originally in 2019. The treatment system was inadequate. And I was not satisfied with the increased treatment capacity as well as the. Advanced membrane bioreactor treatment and effluent quality, I was. Then satisfied.
Thank you for that, I'm just trying to make sure I understand that, so. This particular location for the leach field or disposal field, whatever you want to call it, and by the way, your, your email, you call it a leach field, right?
Yes.
A lot of people are complaining about that term, but that's what you call it. The, uh. Prior to your analysis of this bio membrane treatment facility. You didn't like the location of leach field, it was, it was too close?
I did not like the effluent quality. Specifically.
Effluent quality or the leach field location or both?
I don't recall what I used in 2019 to make that evaluation.
All right. I don't have the latitude and longitude handy, but, but can we generally say that this particular leach field is closer? To the creek than the prior two?
Yes.
And, and just so the record is clear. And everyone's talking about dumping it in the creek and this, now you're not, that's not happening, it's going to groundwater, right?
Correct.
But you would, you would agree with me, would you not, that the, the, the groundwater in this area is hydrologically connected? All the wells in the, in the downstream wells in this area?
That's a very broad characterization, groundwater flows in a direction, there are. There will be wells that are down gradient of. The discharge.
And is certainly hydrogeologically connected to the creek, correct?
My understanding is that the creek is a losing. Stream bed at this location, not a gaining stream bed?
Okay.
Sorry?
I'm sorry, I was, I was surprised at that.
Yeah.
All right. So you're not entirely, you're not sure about the connections with the creek, but, but. You do believe that there are wells downstream that are certainly hydrogeologically connected. To the groundwater where the discharge is occurring.
Downstream and down gradient are two different terms, you're down gradient of groundwater, downstream of service water.
Let's go down gradient.
Yes.
The answer is yes?
Yes.
So. Even the down gradient connection. Of the. Groundwater where the discharge is occurring in at least some of the wells. That are down gradient. You would expect that whatever ends up in the groundwater. At the location of discharge. Has the potential to end up in the wells that are down gradient. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm a little confused on the influent holding tanks, there are holding tanks here, are there not? Or influent? Or do I have that wrong?
I, I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, when the influent's coming in before it gets treated.
Sure.
All the activities at the lodge and, and the property owners above. Is it held in a location?
There is an equalization basin.
Okay, the basin, is that what we call the equalization basin? And what happens if there's a, if, uh, if, if there's a failure in that, to that and. Or a storm condition or some sort of upset condition, what happens to that influent?
Generally, if the pumps were, were to go out, uh, they would raise. Or the level, the water would, would rise out of the tank and probably spill, um.
That happened in, uh, February, I believe, this year, did it not?
It wasn't due to a failure of the pumps, it was overwhelmed by the hydraulic load. Due to, uh, manmade error at the facility.
Okay, and whatever caused it, it overflowed, is that right?
Correct.
All right, yeah, that water went where?
It, uh, came out of the treatment system and went down the parking lot and entered the Little Tetsukki Creek for a portion of it.
All right. So I want to be clear on the, on the permit itself, because you've, you've got these, these, everyone's, you know. At these constituents that you're testing for. And, and, uh. Because you, your position, as I understand, is that this is what we typically do with liquid waste, right? That were chlorides, ni- nitrogen, nitrates and. TDS, for instance, but is there any pro, is there any prohibition in this permit? Draft permit to preclude the introduction of any other hazardous materials?
No.
You, you don't expect that to happen, right?
No, uh, hazardous is just a defined term under RICRA and CIRCLA, so it's, we use it cautiously and.
Well, sorry to interrupt you, go ahead.
That's all.
No, I, I, I agree. So if I'm referring to RICRA, I'm going to say hazardous waste, okay? You know, we can use that term, if I'm going to refer to CIRCLA, I'm going to say hazardous substance, which is about anything else, okay? Hazardous substance being more broad than hazardous waste, but let's, let's stick to hazardous waste. Is there any prohibition? In this draft permit? To preclude the introduction of hazardous waste into the waste stream?
We generally, generally rely upon our $15,000 per day per violation. Potential for penalties as a deterrent to. People to do what you're suggesting could be done.
Well, we've already, you know, sometimes, I mean, human error occurs, correct?
Correct.
It just occurred with the, with the overflow of the holding tanks, I believe in February, right?
Yes, but I would be cautious to equate those two, um, that was, uh, overflow of pool water, which does not have any hazardous substance or waste in it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not making a connection between that, I'm just making a human error observation, right?
Sure.
So human error happens, right? All right, so, um. I, I guess I'm really curious to, to, on the, this allocation of risk, and I appreciate. Mr. Herman's statement that we rely on the $15,000 per day per violation penalties. If someone does something that. A human error otherwise that introduces a. Hazmous constituent into this waste stream. And it ends up down gradient into one of the wells, but let me ask you, the, it seems to me that the, the risk on that. Determining that and abating it is, is, is falling on the downstream property owners.
Objection, is there a question?
Is that, you agree with that assessment? That's the question.
Uh, no, we would hold the lodge responsible for. Clean of, cleanup of any contamination that they caused.
So the question is, is, you know. Do you believe that the, that establishing? The causal relationship. With what the lodge did and what a property owner. Experiences. Should be borne by the property owner?
No, it should be held by Bishop's, Bishop's Lodge.
Yeah, if, if, I'm going to give you a hypothetical, because you're experts, okay? If a downstream or down gradient property owner. Decided to test for, let's say TC and VC. Common. Aggradation products of, of solids. And they found. In their well. Let's say they found them at. Standards five parts per billion, they found them at three parts per billion, still got them. And. They would have to establish that that came from Bishop's Lodge, would they not?
Objection, you were speculating, speculating on our enforcement. Um, procedures, which, which the Bureau has not testified on.
Do you have a reply to that, Mr. Nast? It did sound like that.
You like that objection, I think. No, I, I, I'm just curious that, you know. This, this whole permit procedure that we're doing here, when we don't know. The characterization of the influent, we don't know the characterization of the effluent, we've got some metals. And yes, they're naturally occurring perhaps, but we got some metals analyses for two years ago, that's all we got. And I'm just curious if you're comfortable with the offloading of this risk. To the citizens living downstream of this facility?
I, I wouldn't characterize it that way.
Well. I think perhaps. You're actually, what are you, quarterly testing, correct, on, 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 uh? Uh, you're not asking for any testing on any sort of 3103. Constituents other than. Three was talked about that are typically in. Domestic waste, right?
Yes, because there's a reason for that.
Because, yeah, there is, you've explained that, now you've explained quite well your reason for it, because that's what you think you ought to be doing. But what I'm asking you is if. If, since a resort isn't testing for anything else. It's up to the property owners downstream to ensure that their water quality. Has not been impaired by the introduction of other contaminants besides the ones. That you're putting the permit.
Objection, the Bureau has not testified on what the responsibilities are. Of the property owners in terms of testing their well water.
If, if there is an introduction of hazardous. Wastes into the waste stream. The lodge isn't going to find out about it, are they?
That's not necessarily untrue.
Well, actually, the, the permit, draft permit doesn't require them to test for it.
Just because it's not in the draft permit doesn't mean you can cause any contamination of anything listed in 3103 or toxic pollutants. The four constituents that we have in the permit are there for a reason. And they're used as indicator constituents for larger issues that we would be able to see in the treatment system. If an introduction of a hazardous waste were to occur. This is a biological living treatment system, it responds immediately to the introduction of anything of that nature. Therefore, because you have process controls not out, outside the requirements of a discharge permit. The operator would be pretty quickly notified of a potential issue. Based on the smell, the site, the. Components of the wastewater treatment system to be able to tell when there is something generally introduced into a treatment system. That should not be there. If that were to be the case, we would then open the scope of what we would then be looking at. To try to determine what is the cause of that upset. And work backwards as well as forward to then start to figure out what the impacts of that potentially would be. So there is a lot more that is required of a permitee. Outside of just a discharge permit. To be in compliance with the Water Quality Act and the ground surface water protection regulations, they work in tandem.
They do, but yet you're, you know, still the bottom line is they're not testing for these, these substances. And, and this morning, I think, uh, the, the experts from the resort. Testified that you would need a different treatment system to take care of some of these other contaminants.
Objection, is there a question?
Yeah, did you, you recall that testimony?
I believe so, yes.
All right, well, the, the treatment system itself, you, you, is it designed to? You cover, uh, soluble inorganics?
It doesn't need to be, because that's not what's supposed, what is generally found to be in domestic wastewater. If those were in there, we would be discussing a different type of discharge permit, as well as a different type of treatment technology.
Certainly, if they're not in there, the discussion's moot, but the question is what if they show up in there, there's no way to find out that they're in there, is my question, and is that, is that?
No, we would. There are signs and symptoms that we would start to develop or determine. Within the wastewater treatment system, like I said, it's a living biological system. And when these things occur, it generally kills that, and that is a very easy thing to determine from a wastewater operator. Which this system is required to have to utilize it.
So are you suggesting that all the 3103? Contaminant levels are going to be picked up by the operator?
No, what I'm saying is, is when there is a situation that there is what we call an upset. That leads to us asking those questions, what caused this, how did that occur? And as part of that investigation, samples are taken, they're analyzed for suites of things. Um, and you start to determine what caused it through that process.
When you say there's an upset condition, there, the treatment system might just work fine. But yet you could have in your effluent. Different 3103 constituents, so the treatment system is not even designed to address.
Objection, is there a question?
That correction?
He's asking, so she's answered twice about, um, the bioreactor. Addressing or being, uh, compromised, uh, by things. Inputs that shouldn't have been there. Do you have a more specific question, Mr.?
I don't understand, uh, I do, and maybe you can clarify this, uh, Ms. Young, I don't understand. How. A treatment system. That's not designed to remove particular constituents. Is going to tell you at the time. That that constituent is present. Without it first being released into the environment and someone picking it up through an analytical test. Did you explain how this, how can that happen?
So they might not be able to tell the specific constituent of concern, but potentially the suite. It's similar to your stomach, you eat normal things every day, say you went and got a really spicy burrito. You can tell that there is a difference in what's happening in your microbiome. That's a very, you know, you know, s- similar type of system to a wastewater treatment system, so although we might not know. Exactly that constituent that caused the upset. Operators are trained to identify the different suites of constituents that cause certain reactions, a lot of things have this particular smell. A particular color, they cause particular issues within a wastewater treatment plant. And so that is part of the training and experience of a wastewater operator, and that's what they bring to the table. When they're required to operate a facility.
Yeah, I'm still, I'm going to move on, but I just want to clear that an operator can actually do that prior. Prior to the discharge already occurring, but you, 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 you're, you're saying that the operator has some ability to determine.
Sure, the discharge may have occurred, we start to then begin an investigation. The investigation doesn't end there, if we find it in the effluent, we start to work for it for the groundwater. Um, if there are exceedances, we go through abatement, there are a lot of steps. In this process when that occurs.
Um, all right, that's fair enough, so, so the discharge would occur, then you've got to, somebody would alert the operator and you have to do an investigation to find out. What the constituent, what, what the offending constituent was, correct?
In general, that would be part of the process.
Right. Now, let me ask you, I think the resort, I've read their materials, and something stuck out to me that they, they, they claim. That all the 3103 standards are met. And because of their treatment facility and everything else they've got going on there, um, if that were true, they wouldn't need a permit, would they?
That's not correct.
Well, would they be subject to the exemption under, uh, under 3105?
The requirement, do you want to answer?
The 3105 exemption, uh, has a very, very important. Word intertwined into it, which is that they would still have the potential to discharge a contaminant and therefore would still require a discharge permit.
Okay, so you, so it's the, it's the, uh, it's, it's the, uh. The term potential that, 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 from the department's standpoint brings them into the permitting process?
Yes.
Fair enough. So. I was also looking at, and, and, um, there was, there was, um, cross examination by. This moment, the, the notion that all these septic tanks are down the, down the river here. And, and I want to make clear when there's those, those property owners all. Have to comply with the liquid waste regulations, do they not?
If the flow is less than 5,000 gallons per day, the answer is yes.
Okay. So making that assumption, they would be subject to all the engineering constraints. And the design constraints of the liquid waste regulations, correct? Okay, so making that assumption, they would be subject to all the engineering constraints and the design constraints of the liquid waste regulations, correct?
Affirmative.
And then let me ask you about the, uh, this technical advisory committee. Do they, or do, do you rely on a technical advisory committee for things such as. Sizing of disposal fields. Um, various engineering requirements in, in, in your work?
We do.
And that technical advisory committee, I, I think they have, they've come up with.
Sorry, sorry, she was, she was answering. The groundwater quality bureau and the twenty point six point two regulations do not include a wastewater technical advisory committee. In the way that you're referring to them. We rely upon our expertise in-house and any external expertise that we engage.
And the major difference is, is all of our systems are required to be designed by an engineer, which is not the case in twenty point seven point three. Therefore, the technical advisory committee is evaluating general treatment technologies and platforms in order to expedite their usage by. Smaller system operators and to be then installed by, uh, an installer or installer specialist, which is, um. A, a lower certification requirement than an engineer, so it's just looked at slightly differently.
All right, um, yeah, that clears it up because you, in the, um, the liquid waste regulations. They rely on the technical advisory committee for determining the maximum size of a disposal field, for instance.
For approved treatment technologies, and if not, then it would have to then be moved into being verified. And designed by an engineer.
Okay, and that, the way they, the way that they've. Recommended sizing is one point two five square feet per, I think it's per. One point two five square feet per gallon per day. You know that off the top of your head?
Objection, the Bureau didn't testify on the liquid waste regulation.
No, I was asking, I'm only talking about the disposal field.
I'm sorry, repeat the question?
The question is, I mean, the, there's, there's certain sizing requirements, the technical advisory committee has, has imposed that are. I believe it's one point two five square feet per gallon per day, which you can reduce, by the way, by thirty percent if you have secondary tertiary treatment.
I'm gonna just, yeah, no, no, it's okay. Right, the objection from Ms. Weatherly.
Um, Mr. Nasco, they did not present testimony about the liquid waste regulation and they don't. Uh, work in the liquid, liquid waste regulatory staff program.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I would have asked it, but, but I think Ms. Uh, Ms. Young testified that, uh, as a technical advisory committee. Uh, uh, they don't use what they've done in terms of, of, uh, sizing the disposal fields. Yeah, I mean, that's all I'm trying to get at, that they're not, they're not using that, and, and I understand they're not. They're not, they're not here to testify about the liquid waste regulations.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get a handle on what, you know, we've got these big difference, you may have already touched on it, between the sizing requirements. Under the liquid waste regulations, and then we've got. Uh, and I'm going to follow this up with a question, believe me, the, the disposal field or leach field. That is ten times the size that would otherwise be allowed. And I'm curious, does that come into your. Analysis in any way, shape or form when you're looking at a discharge permit under the ground and surface water protection regulations?
So those regulations are not applicable in this case. There were different things that were used to evaluate. The disposal field sizing for this particular case, which Deb could talk more about.
Well, I was just wondering if those, those sizing requirements that the.
Objection, this was asked and answered. And she just gave you an answer, Mr. Ness.
She said that, I was pointing it toward Ms. Carpenter because she said she was going to ask about it.
All right, yeah, Ms. Carpenter can address the, uh, disposable area.
Well, the sizing requirements in twenty point seven point three are not germane to this conversation. This soil disposal area was evaluated through the lens of twenty point six point two.
Yeah, and there's no sizing requirements twenty point six point two, correct?
No.
There are not specific prescriptive sizing requirements. The purpose is still to evaluate it to be protective of groundwater.
Yeah, and that's really why, thank you for that clarification. All right, so, so under the, uh, ground and surface water protection regulations. Sizing isn't as relevant as it would be under the liquid waste, is that correct?
I, I'm sorry, I need to object again. The liquid waste regulations are not an issue here, and they're not in any of these witnesses' testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Moncay. Uh, again, uh, Bureau, uh, staff. Um, I think understand the distinction being drawn here. Only answer questions about the, uh. Uh, the regulatory scheme under which you are permitting this. And do not be drawn into the liquid waste regulations, please. Mr. Nasco?
Well, I just, I, I'm going to move on from that because I just want to make the record quite clear that there, you're not looking at sizing. Issues of the. Disposal field. I don't care if you use a liquid waste as an analogy or some other, anything else, it doesn't matter to me. We're not under the liquid waste regulations at this hearing. But, but I just want to clarify, sizing of the disposal field is not relevant. Your issuance of this permit, is that correct?
Objection, Mr. Nasco, you have already asked and they have already answered that question.
That's right, Mr. Nasco, you're mischaracterizing what Ms. Young just said. She said that. It is not a prescriptive sizing requirement. The sizing they consider. Is whether that size protects the ground and surface water for the, uh, amount of discharge.
And you satisfied yourself that this sizing requirement, this particular instance, is protective of groundwater?
Yes.
All right, let me, let's, you know, I did some calculations over the noon hour because I was curious about this and, and, um. Wanted to figure out how much water is actually being discharged into this twenty five hundred square foot disposal field. Have you made any calculations in that regard?
I don't, I think I understand the question.
Well, let me clarify, I forgot. There, there's, there's a discharge into this disposal field, correct, of, of liquid?
Yes.
And, and it's authorized at thirty thousand gallons per day, right? I want, I'm trying to figure out, you know, um, how much water. The community actually knows how much discharge is actually going into this twenty five hundred square foot field. And, and what? Tell me if I'm right or wrong, but, but when I, when I determine this, you know, I had, it, it takes seven point four eight gallons to fill up one cubic feet of water. A foot of water, uh, area of water. Are you familiar with that, that calculation?
Objection, Mr. Nasco, I heard a couple of questions in there. Can you clarify which one you're asking?
I think Ms. Carpenter just nodded in the affirmative. So she understood it. Are you familiar with that, uh, that, that relationship, Ms. Carpenter?
It's basic water and wastewater math.
Yeah, exactly. All right. So let's get basic, basic wastewater math. So, so I took thirty thousand gallons per day. Authorized under this proposed permit. I multiplied it by seven. I got two hundred and ten thousand gallons per week. Am I math correct?
I'm going to take you at your word. I will not do math in public.
I can tell you, I think it's correct because seven times three is twenty one. So what, in order to figure out how much water, cubic feet of water is going in here. I divided that two hundred and ten thousand gallons per week by seven point four gallons of, per cubic foot, right? And I come up with a, if we were to do an imaginary vessel. I want to know if you've done, it said twenty eight thousand seventy four cubic feet per week. Is being placed into this disposal field. Did you ever do that calculation?
That is not part of our permit evaluation and application process, that specific evaluation.
So you never looked at what, if you were to construct a, uh, a tank. That covered a twenty five hundred square foot area, how tall that tank would have to be to hold all that water?
No.
Let me ask you, the last, uh, disposal field that failed, did that fail because of saturation?
No.
What was the basis for the failure?
The treatment system had failed and therefore it wasn't effectively treating the wastewater. Therefore, there was a high, uh, value or a high. Uh, number of organic constituents still remaining in the wastewater. It was being discharged to the disposal field and therefore. Um, when that occurs, that allows biological activity to then follow and also, um, start to occur in the leach field. We call it like gumming up. It, it creates a biomat which then water is not able to effectively percolate and, um. Move through the leach field. So it's, it's physically able to not, um, disperse or dispose of the wastewater through it.
So it basically fogs up, is that?
Yes.
Happens. All right, and that's what happened in this instance?
Yes.
All right, I, I'll pass the witness, Madam Hearing Officer. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nasco. Ms. Weatherly, do you have any follow up?
Um, Madam Hearing Officer, the, the Bureau would like to take a short break before we have any rebuttal testimony.
Before the break, I need to introduce, uh.
PT one?
PT one.
Objections? PT one is admitted.
Um, no objection, Madam Hearing Officer. Can I also just make sure I believe that we admitted exhibits E one and E two instead of third?
Nope, you offered E two but not E one.
Okay, may I offer those now and admit them now, please?
Yes, objections to E one?
No objection.
All right, it's admitted. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, let's take ten minutes, which on your phone will be four P M. We are back after a short break. Um, Ms. Weatherly, what say you?
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer. I have a few questions, uh, for the Bureau. The first being, uh, is the disposal field the primary disposal location?
No.
What are the disposal options and what does that mean for the discharge of the facility?
The facility's primary disposal option is to just discharge class one A reclaimed wastewater to above ground use. Uh, to irrigate, uh, portions of the facility using spray irrigation. And then after that, uh, if irrigation is, is not, um, appropriate due to weather, oversaturation, due to rain. Uh, the ground is frozen, uh, things like that, then the facility would then be discharging. To the low pressure dose disposal field, and that is something that I, uh, recommended in a revision to the draft permit to be very specific in how that would be authorized. To, to clarify that it is a primary disposal and then only if that's not appropriate to then go to the low pressure dose disposal field.
And if it does go to the low pressure dose disposal field, what is the quality of the water at that time?
It, it's still the same. It still is class one A reclaimed wastewater. Um, but since it's not being used for beneficial purpose, we refer to it at that point as treated wastewater.
Thank you. Uh, what did N M D, or why, excuse me, why did N M D approve the proposed size of the disposal field?
Well, there were several factors that went into this. Sorry for the rattling here, but, uh, first, you have to look at the, the, the effluent quality, which in this case is extremely high. Uh, there's, there, there's no organic material. Uh, so we're not relying on the soil at all for any, any treatment. We're just looking for dispersal. It goes in, it goes away. Let's see, the other thing I was looking at is, um, we also have disinfection prior to discharge. Um, as we have mentioned several times, and I want to foot stomp this again. This is meant for very limited use. They're not going to be using this three hundred and sixty five days a year. It's just not meant for that. The nitrogen discharge limit that is being imposed on Bishop's Lodge is very, very stringent. Um, so that is another reason why we're not worried about sizing. Or treatment in the soil. How many? Okay, and then another thing that we looked at was how quickly the, um. The effluent. Will go through the soil. Um, and we relied on the soil report that was provided by J S A I. What is their full name?
Uh, John.
John Shoemaker, right? John Shoemaker and Associates. Um, and they, you know, used A S T M. Twenty three thirty four to determine those values, and then the system was based off that permeability rate. And the other thing to consider is a low pressure dosing field. It spreads the effluent out across the entire infiltrative surface area. Of every single lateral that's in that disposal area. Unlike gravity distribution that just slug loads the front end of any disposal area. So. These things make the disposal area last longer. Uh, perform better over time. And they are more efficient. Thank you. Um, and they're gonna, and, and this, the other thing is, when we say efficiency, what that means is it helps us deal with like peak loading factors. Say like at Christmas time, when there's, uh, more people at the resort, or certain times of the day, you can expect more wastewater to come into the plant. Like at ten A M, six P M. When everybody turns on their dishwashers. Takes a shower. Uh, and then when you take all of these things into consideration, proximity, uh, to potable, non-potable water sources. You know, the sizing is, 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 it meets the requirements for what they want to use it for. And it's protective of groundwater and public health.
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer. I have no more questions.
All right, thank you. Uh, anything, uh, um, in your mind to follow on, uh, the, uh, redirect there? Ms. Moncay?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Rasco, anything further? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Herman, Ms. Young, Ms. Carpenter and Ms. Weatherly. Ms. Moncay, will there be anything further from the petitioner, uh, beyond, uh, Mr. Fusion?
Not today, Madam Hearing Officer. Um, we would of course request a closing statement. An oral closing statement. Um, we would like to do that. And I can see, um, Mr. Fusion did clear his schedule for Wednesday. I can see if there's any possibility that he could be available tomorrow, but I can't guarantee that, Madam Hearing Officer.
Would you be able to do that before we? Great, I mean, would you be able to check on that now? I probably should have asked you to do that before the break.
Sure, um, I could try and reach him now if we could take just a break and I could see if he would be available tomorrow.
All right, and let me ask Mr. Nasco if, uh, there'll be anything further. I, I do have some public commenters who wanted to, to come tomorrow. Because what I'm trying to avoid is. If we just come back for a half hour tomorrow at one and then come back for an hour Wednesday morning, that doesn't seem like the best use of. Uh, kind of our collective time. So. I'm sorry about this, but let's take one more break, see if we can hear from Mr. Fusion tomorrow, and then wrap it up. Okay, all right, one more break. Thank you. Fast. Then we set an amount of time that in the rule, it's usually thirty days. We can shorten that or lengthen that as necessary. Or the parties to submit their closing argument in writing and any proposed findings or legal conclusions that they want to offer. Then I have time to make a report. And then the parties often have the opportunity or want the opportunity to comment on my report. High praise all around, whatever it is you're going to say. And, and then it goes to the, everything that you've said and my report goes to the cabinet secretary. And then he issues a final order. So it's a kind of a lengthy post-hearing process unless we shorten it a little bit. I sometimes try to shorten it just by taking less time than I would otherwise be allowed. You know what I mean?
So I think we would request, Madam Hearing Officer, we have no issue doing the findings and fact and conclusions of law. Obviously, we would do those in writing, but we would request an oral closing.
Okay, I, I, it's, it's fine. We sure have a lot of time tomorrow. So.
I promise not to take all of that time. I promise that.
All right, Mr. Nasco. So I would draw a distinction there. I think you're right. In my mind, the lawyers are doing important work when they cite to the transcript for proposed findings. As the closing argument, though, we don't typically have citations to the transcript. So, all right, we'll take closing arguments tomorrow. Please try to keep them to twenty minutes or less. We'll take public comment. Do we feel we need to come back at one if we finish before lunch? Is that? I'm seeing heads nodding in the audience. All right, so we'll also count on a one o'clock public comment, but I'll be inviting it before then. And then we'll be done. Anything else we need to do? Let me ask right now, since it's just four thirty. Do we have anyone who hasn't spoken yet who'd like to offer public comment right this moment? No? All right, we'll see you at nine, room three oh seven. Thank you very much.
Thank you.